All right, good evening and welcome to the July 29th meeting here in Town Hall. The Zoning Board of Appeals calling the meeting to order and we'll ask everyone to please silence their cellphones at this time. I'll introduce the board from my right to left, your left to right. James Morse, who is a full voting member of the board. To my immediate right is Scott Solinsky, who is a full voting member and the vice chair of the board. My name is TJ Hurry, I'm the chair, and to my left is Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for tonight. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed only at the project itself, and we ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and come to the podium. We do ask you to state your name and address for the record, and we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person. The board will then either continue or close the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves, and we would make a motion to either deny or approve. That would be made and voted upon. Such a motion would include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approval of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. All right, so turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment. We have one continuation, five new hearings, and we do have a few items on our open meeting agenda. So first up for tonight is public comment. This public comment portion is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So is there anyone out there wishing to speak on something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, moving right along to our continuation. Up first, we have Application 33-21, Falmouth Housing Trust, Inc., 55 Lewis Neck Road in East Falmouth, requesting a comprehensive permit to construct three affordable single-family dwellings. And for the applicant tonight, we have Attorney Moynihan. Attorney Moynihan, before we let you begin, Ed Van Kuren. We have four voting members on the project, myself, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Solinsky. Ed Van Kuren is not with us tonight, but James has been present throughout all the hearings on this, so I'll be appointing him as a voting member. And since there's four of us, in the event that we do reach a decision tonight, it would have to be unanimous.
Thank you for comprehensive-
I'm sorry, comprehensive permit-
Majority.
Majority, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
That's the speech I'm giving for the rest of the-
You had me there.
Sorry. Go right ahead, Attorney Moynihan.
Thank you for the record, Laura Moynihan. I believe the purpose of the continuance was really for the board to have some time to review the file material, so I wasn't expecting that I would provide any further testimony. I think I've killed you with paper on this one. And so I wasn't expecting there would be any public testimony, for that matter, this evening. Thank you.
We are in receipt of the letter from Attorney Moynihan from July 21st. It summarized, and she also did send over the CHAP information.
All right. Do you want to turn it to board questions, if anyone does have any questions?
Actually, I don't have any questions. I finished reviewing everything that came over, so-
All right.
If the, I don't know if there's any public comment, but if the board didn't have any questions, I would make a motion to close.
All right, we'll just check this half of the table. Good?
Yeah.
All right, so we will turn it to public comment. If there's any question, comments, or concerns regarding this project, raise your hand, anyone, sir?
Good evening. I also didn't think that we were going to make presentations. I think we voted to continue for a full vote tonight, but I'll just reiterate briefly our concerns from-
Sorry, can you just state your name for the record?
Oh, Ryan Forgioni, on behalf of Butters, Kathleen Marr and Byrne McDade at 51 Lewis Neck Road in East Falmouth. I just wanted to again reiterate our concerns with the project, was that there's a private covenant on this parcel, and it's our position that the ZBA does not have the authority to overrule a private covenant between the Falmouth Planning Board and the Falmouth Housing Trust. We have testimony from the Falmouth Planning Board that they believed when they entered into the covenant that there was supposed to be one single-family unit on the lot, instead of multiple units as proposed, and the plan language of the agreement says multiple times that there's one single-family unit supposed to be on the lot. So it's our position that until that covenant is removed from the parcel, the ZBA does not have the authority to grant a comprehensive permit on this project, and so we respectfully ask that they deny the permit as requested. Do you have any follow-up questions?
Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Any other public comment, anyone else? Ma'am?
Can I just go to the podium?
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Carol Malik. I reside at 10 Lewis Neck Road in East Falmouth, Massachusetts. Just briefly, I've been a resident there since 1997, and I am opposed to the building of the three affordable housings at that location. I just wanted to go on record.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Oh, any questions? Sorry, did you have a question for you?
Yeah, I did.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Scott had a question for you, my apologies.
I'm sorry, who was it? Okay, Scott.
Yeah, what's the nature of your opposition to it?
Well, first of all, I feel that the three houses are too much for that location. I feel like they're being shoehorned into that location. I look at the houses that are there. We all take pride in our homes. As I said, in 1997, I moved in there, and my dream was to live there, and I finally could afford it. And I think there's other places that people need to look at and not this location. I just think it's not going to look good. It doesn't fit with the neighborhood. I'm not against affordable housing. I just don't think we need three there. That's why I oppose it.
So it's more of aesthetics than?
I was told that if somebody was going to buy my house, if it was ever for sale, they wouldn't look at those three affordable housings as a comp, you know, comparable. But visually, when you drive down the street, you're going to know the difference. Also, I was told to look at another location that was across from, I think, Falmouth Lumber, where there is two or three affordable homes. I just don't think it's going to look good on the street. I just don't think this street is adequate to handle three more families. And when I say families, we're talking, you know, maybe mother, daughter, father, son, more than two people. That's why I'm opposed to it. It's not just aesthetically, it's just overall what it brings to the street. We don't have mail service down the street. We don't have trash pickup down the street. That is of strong concern to me. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
And did I see a hand on this side?
Hi, my name is Jordan Frye. I live in Precinct One. I am just here because it's really difficult for me to find housing. I am 29, I work full-time, and I know that the town has a real crisis on its hands, and I know that we talk a lot about the need for affordable housing, but I feel like it always comes, there's always a reason why this isn't the right place or this isn't the right time. And I just would ask that you please consider the crisis that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joan Bates. I live at 29 Redlands Road in Schumett Valley, otherwise known as East Falmouth. I'm a real estate agent here in town. I can tell you about the huge struggle that we have to find housing. I'll give you a tiny example. I know, two minutes. Tiny example, I know an individual who earns $105,000 a year. He has a family of four. He cannot find suitable housing for his family in this community. Does that make you crazy? It makes me crazy. I happen to serve on the Falmouth Housing Trust. I feel strongly that we talk and talk and talk about affordable housing, and when it comes right down to it, we don't do it. It's time to move. Even Governor Baker said it's time to move. Look at all the proposals he had for finding money sources. Maybe that'll help us here, certainly hope so. As far as is something squashed in, we have community locations all over town where there's a variety of housing, more than one. As you well know, we have a wide variety of housing that is what you might call squashed in or not. This is a lovely location. It's in a lovely location, I believe. There is an opportunity, I think, to campaign for making it a public road. Just saying, it's already paved, whatever. In any event, we're missing an opportunity if we don't let this go forward. We spent a lot of time on it, a lot of money. It's time to move forward. Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
You said you're on the housing trust?
Yes.
So some of the complaints are that it may be too dense. Is two houses better than no houses? If it's such a critical?
Frankly, what we have is a situation where if this were a private developer who routinely take a piece of land and put houses on it to the extent that they believe is appropriate, I don't think there would be the same kind of opposition.
You know what I asked? I asked if you thought it would, if two houses would help our critical situation more than-
Anything helps.
Disapproval?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Donahue. I live on Habview Drive, which is, Lewis Neck Drive is behind me. And I become friends with one of the people who bought that property, and the houses are going to be 16 feet away from her house. That's very, very close. I also lived in Brockton, that's where I moved from. I was educated there for over 24 years. I find this a safety thing with the kids walking to the bus. There's no close bus stop there. They have to walk a distance for public transportation and for school bus. And I do believe in affordable housing. Believe me, I lived in Brockton for 32 years, I know a lot about it. But my point of view is, I live in Falmouth because I can't afford to live in Harwich. I lived in Brockton because I can't afford to live in Dover or Wellesley or Newton. So I feel like there's alternative places for people to go to find a house where they can afford to go.
So is, what's your point?
My point is, I-
Forward or against?
I'm against it. I don't think it's the right spot for it. There's no streetlights, it's a very narrow road. I know they paved it, but it's a very narrow road, too.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Tyler Barron. I live in Precinct One. I can't afford to live in Harwich. I can't afford to live in Wellesley, and I can't afford to live in Falmouth. This is where I grew up. I'm 27 years old. I do carpentry work, and as a carpenter, have no prospect of owning a home here. I can work on all your homes and make them nice and pretty, make them worth a lot of money, but then I can't actually live in one. So I think any opportunity to create affordable housing here should be jumped on immediately. I understand people's concerns. I'm the one off and doing the work in people's backyards, right? It's loud, it's obnoxious. People are doing work next door to where I live. It's part of living in a community. It's part of shifting your expectations of what that community needs to be. And I think we need to begin to shift those expectations. I live in Woods Hole, where the density is pretty high. There's homes that are 16 feet apart. Then there's homes that are on, you know, three-acre lots that are million-dollar homes, and they're far apart, and that's great for them. And it's great for the people who live close together. Community shifts, people make do, you get to know your neighbors. It could be me being your neighbor. So not that bad of a guy. I could probably help you on your home if you ever need help. Yeah, I'd be the person who would be in that home. And again, understanding people's concerns. I would hope that you would, I'd ask that you consider people's need for housing more important than the concerns of people who already have homes and are worried about the aesthetics of those communities and of those neighborhoods, because those are things that can be talked about, changed, discussed, and, you know, consensus can be made after the fact, after people have a place to live and after, like, the main priorities of why people live here and how they found housing are met. That's all.
Thank you. All right, anyone else out there? Last call, anyone else? All right. Attorney Moynihan?
Thank you. Just want to respond to some of the comments. So as far as the trash collection goes, I think we've given you testimony from the town that there will be trash collection on Lewis Neck Road. The comment about the Butters' house being 16 feet from one of the lots, I don't think that's accurate. I believe the reference is to Lot, the Lot One proposed house, which is set back almost 30 feet from the side lot line, and then there's also additional space on the Butters' side. You have that in writing. I can't find the exact length, but I believe it's 50 to 60 feet away. The crisis that we're having, that you've heard testimony to, is, you know, we've had four units built and with occupancy permits issued since the 2019 Housing Production Plan was adopted by the town. The goals of the Housing Production Plan were 56 units for homeownership over five years. So in the next three years to meet that goal, we're looking at 52 units. So I think that goes to your question, Mr. Solinsky, about the number of units there. We are in a crisis. We're nowhere near meeting the goal of the Housing Production Plan.
Laura, why do you think that is? Why are we so far behind?
Because I think it's very difficult to permit affordable housing. It takes a long time. There are a lot of roadblocks, there's a lot of opposition. This project is a perfect example. I mean, this started with discussions in May of 2018. You know, we're now in, almost, we're in July of 2021. And it's not COVID. I mean, you all know that the permit situation has been, you know, going like gangbusters. It's just very, very difficult to get affordable housing permitted. It's very expensive because there's so much work that has to be put into the development plans in advance with the engineering that's required, the legal that's required, the site approval process that applicants have to go through. So people have to make a decision that they're going to invest a lot of money into a project without really knowing if they're going to come out with what they need to make the project work. You know, and there's always opposition from the Butters' neighborhood. You know, you know, you hear these hearings. So it's a very, very difficult process. You know, I think that in the town of Falmouth, we have a great Affordable Housing Committee. We have a great Affordable Housing Coordinator. We've got lots of resources to try and move these things along, but it's not happening. It's not happening. So the crisis is that, you know, three houses originally started at four. There's over an acre of land here. That's at four units. That's four units per acre, which is acceptable, has been considered acceptable density in the community. Now we're even less than that. So we're at three units per acre, which is not shoehorning houses. If you look at the maps that we've given you, the lot sizes, some of them are smaller in the neighborhood. So it does fit within the size of the neighborhood. Did that answer your question?
No, you think it would be advantageous? I mean, all three of these would go against the roles of affordable.
Absolutely.
And that we would be three houses closer.
That's right. And the other important factor is that trying to meet that Housing Production Plan goal, when you look at a nonprofit developer who's coming forward and all three homes are eligible for the subsidized inventory, that's a big difference. That's three, that's three projects almost, you know, versus one project where you have 75% market rate units and 25% affordable units. You might only get one or two out of those projects, and you're getting maybe eight, seven market units. So it's a big factor when you have a nonprofit come forward and are making all three affordable. So yes, it is a crisis in the sense that there are young people and other people in response to Carol Malik's comment. It's about our economy. We want our young people to live here so they can work here and thrive here and have families here. We don't want them to leave. These are our children. These are our nieces, our nephews, our, you know, these are our relatives and friends, and we want them to stay in this community. And we have, as a town, we have adopted a Housing Production Plan because that's the will of our community, to develop those houses so that we can have that flourishing economy. So three houses is important. You know, reducing the number of houses means that you're looking here at two houses at about, probably Karen Bissonnet's estimating, about a cost of $475,000 per house because you have to apply all the soft costs over two houses only. Plus, you'd be looking at two houses that would be at 80% income only, meaning that you're not getting the additional $40,000 in sale revenue from a 100% unit. So that's a factor here, too, that you, that when the number of houses is reduced, the cost is, you know, extraordinary for those two homes. If you have three homes, you're able to spread those costs out over the three homes. But more importantly, when you're looking at the number of homes here, you know, we have the fire department saying they have no issues with this road. We have the engineering department saying they have no issues with this road. Frankly, we haven't had the planning board saying anything about it. And the three houses fits within the density that's appropriate and has been approved. So yes, we must make exceptions when we're looking at affordable housing. That's why we have the 40B Housing Law, for the boards to address the local concern of a shortage of affordable housing. That's what we're doing with this project and any other project. You're addressing that local concern because that local concern outweighs other concerns that Butters' may have about the change in their neighborhood. That's the bottom line. As far as the-
Excuse me, did you say that the planning board had nothing to say about this?
They didn't issue any comments on referral. They had a lot to say about other things, but they really didn't give you any information as to the road that I'm aware of. I know we did hear from Mr. Leary about what he thought, you know, for affordable housing developments, the road should be 22 or 24 feet wide, which, you know, you're just not going to get people to be building affordable housing with that kind of standard. That has to be relaxed, or we're never going to meet those affordable housing goals. So you have to look to the safety and adequacy of the road. And as far as the trash goes, as I said, there would be trash collection. You know, all of this is in your records, so we're really just sort of rehashing this a little bit. I do want to respond very quickly to a couple of comments that Attorney Forgioni made. One was that the testimony when the housing trust entered into the covenant was that it would be one single-family dwelling only. That was not the testimony. There has not been any evidence presented of any intention from either the planning board or the housing trust that that was the intention. Later on, when the site approval application came about, there was discussion about the planning board, about what certain members thought, but there has not been any evidence presented of intention at that time, and I've put that in my written correspondence. As far as the restriction of the covenant, excuse me, Mr. Freeman or Attorney Freeman's memo, I think, is the best summary of that. I'm sure the board members have read it. I'd like to just summarize a couple of points because I think it's important and it has been raised again. In his memo, he says, "The covenant is not a restrictive covenant that restricts the use of land to particular uses, such as the restrictions that were litigated in certain cases that have been cited. When a municipal entity holds a restriction that does limit the use of land to a particular use, then expanding beyond the limits of the allowed use will require legislative action by the municipality to release the restriction before the expanded or contradictory use may occur." This is simply not the situation in this case. There is no such restriction in place. There is no prohibition in the covenant against the trust to pursue a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit, seeking and the planning board granting a new determination of access, or for the zoning board to waive the covenant and approve the project. There is no prohibition in the covenant against the trust seeking and the ZBA granting relief under Chapter 40B in order to allow Parcel C2 to be developed for the proposed affordable housing project, subject to any conditions deemed necessary by the ZBA. The Board of Appeals has full authority to grant any necessary relief that would normally be granted by other local boards, including the planning board. And I think those are the most important provisions because there isn't anything in this covenant that says that you can't grant the relief that we're asking you to grant. With that, those are my comments. I hope I've addressed everything that came up. If not, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan.
We typically don't allow people up multiple times, so if you could...
Yeah, give it brief.
Brief, please. Thank you.
Again, Ryan Forgiioni, on behalf of the abutters. I just want to quickly state to some of the housing economics that went on here. My clients bought their house on the parcel for $350,000 in 2011. And the reason they bought for $350,000 was because they didn't have access to the entire lot. It was a split lot with the specific restriction that you could not build in the second half of the lot. Now, there's going to be three houses on the lot that are going to sell for more than the original purchase of that house, essentially putting their property into the affordable housing development. That's, that's not right. I think that we all support affordable housing here, but we should look at buildable lots in Falmouth to put affordable housing on, not unbuildable lots that were created and then were shoe-horning in three different houses into a lot that was only meant for one house. So I think I want to clear that up. And second, regarding the covenant, the opinion is by an attorney. It's not by a judge. It's his opinion that that covenant cannot be overruled. A higher authority is the SJC in 135 Wells Avenue, which specifically said that a property restriction held by a municipality cannot be overridden by the municipality zoning board of appeals when acting on a 40B permit. So the SJC disagrees with Attorney Freeman. So I just wanted to get those two points out there and again ask that the board deny the comprehensive permit.
So I just have just one quick question, just because you quoted a purchase price. So are you saying that the owner of that property today would sell the property for 350?
No.
So what's the comparison that they bought at 350 years back, and now it would only be worth less than what the units are next door?
Because they entered into an agreement in 2011 to buy a house for 350 with the understanding that the second...
I'm asking value. You just, you stated a value comparison. So how would the value of their house compare today versus when they bought it for 350?
If they had the entire lot, it would go up, buy a lot.
Was that a private entity they entered into that agreement with?
At the time, yes, because the lot before that was unbuildable.
So would they afforded any of the protections on the 40B, 40B regulations when they entered into that?
As a member of the town, yes, when the town entered into the protections to remove the unbuildable restriction in exchange for one house.
Was that a 40B, is what I'm saying. Would they afforded the protection of the 40B regulations at that time?
Oh, no, no.
I'll be brief here. So any lot in Falmouth that is a buildable lot can apply for a 40B. Any one of us who own a home in Falmouth and have a lot next door, the owner next door can tear down the house next door and come to you for three or four units. That's the reality of the legislation. I've given testimony, and you have in your file, the record title of this plan. When the abutter purchased their property, there would have been public notice of a note saying, not that the lot, the housing trust lot is unbuildable, but that it's unbuildable or not buildable until the planning board makes an access determination for a building permit under the zoning bylaw. That was notice. I do a lot of real estate work. If I'm looking at titles and I'm looking at the plan and I see that note, I tell my client, hey, there's going to be a house there someday. It doesn't mean that nothing's ever going to be built on that property. And I also tell my clients, anybody can build a 40B project next door to you. So if you have a vacant lot next door, that's the reality of what goes on in Massachusetts. The quote regarding the Wells case, and this is really important, and this is discussed in Attorney Freeman's opinion, the statement of Attorney Forgiioni that this is the Wells case, you know, the Wells case, the SJC has said you can't do this. That's just not the case. And if you read the footnote of the opinion on page four, he said that the Supreme Judicial Court stated that 40B, excuse me, that the covenant, the restricted covenant imposed in the Wells case was imposed by the City of Newton Board of Aldermen in its legislative capacity. Very different from here. Not in the capacity of a board acting under zoning and other land use regulatory statutes and bylaws. In the instant case, in our case, the planning board was clearly not acting as the town's legislative body, but rather was acting in its zoning capacity under the zoning bylaw Section 240-179, 1C. That's the key distinction between this Wells covenant. It was the city itself that was acting in a legislative capacity. Here, we have a permit condition. No different than a condition you oppose in your decisions, the planning board imposes in its decisions. You have to satisfy the condition to get what you've asked for, and that's what occurred. Very simple. Thank you.
All right. Any follow-up questions from the board?
Make a motion to close.
All right, motion to close made by Bob. Second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. The hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Do you want to discuss it all first, or?
Sure. We can have a board discussion. Anyone want to start?
Well, so as far as 40Bs go, and we deal with them all the time, the density here isn't as high as most of the projects we deal with. You've got a, you know, you've got three lots. Even when they divide the lots out, the smallest one is over 10,000 square feet. That with 40Bs where they're three and four thousand square feet. The other thing that we usually hit a lot with the 40Bs is we usually get pages and pages of waiver requests. There's very few here. They're actually, they actually will meet when this project is built. They'll meet all these setbacks, front, rear, side. They'll meet lot coverage by structures. They'll be lot coverage by structures, parking and paving. They'll meet building height, building stories. They'll even meet parking. The only waivers that we have are minimum lot size, which we always get on a 40B, because you're doing more than one unit, frontage, and lot widths. You know, there was comments tonight regarding aesthetics. There's one thing on aesthetics, if it's architectural. I get troubled when aesthetics start being compared to economics. And if you're saying that somebody that can only afford an affordable house is going to change property values in the neighborhood, I just don't see that. I just don't see that as happening.
That shouldn't be considered by...
It shouldn't be considered, but I just think it's a little troubling when you hear that. The lot itself, they're going to have some designated open space in the back. We very rarely see that in any of the 40Bs. They're doing some vegetated buffers. We don't see that. So... And originally, they were going to plan, you know, go for four houses, and they decided to do three. I think that they'll all count on our rules is huge. You know, two are at eighty percent, one's at a hundred.
I tend to agree with Bob.
Yeah, and then on the, you know, I know covenant is going to be a big issue, but they gave a building permit for the single house. Giving the building permit for the single house basically releases the covenant. You know, it's just, that was the whole point of the covenant. And the road has been improved. It's paved. It's nice to drive down there. I went back down again today.
If we don't start to approve some of these that are 100% affordable, we're never going to catch the gap that we're looking at.
That's a huge difference, too. I mean, the most projects we see are 25%. And then you actually go backwards because you've gained all these other marketing units.
It's the only way we're going to bridge it.
So now your population changes in the marketing units, and now you need more affordable units in town. So I just think as projects go, it's, you know, it's a good project. We did have statements from the fire department. They have no issues with safety. We had a statement from the town regarding garbage, that there will be garbage pickup. I assume they'll handle mail like all the other houses where they'll put mailbox at the beginning of the road versus, you know, down the street, but that's up to the postal service.
It's been a long case, and it was presented well.
It was presented well.
We've got everything we were looking for.
You know, I had one issue with the way the file went, and it was procedural. And they had to do it with the department, didn't have to do it with the applicant. I reviewed all the minutes that were submitted. You know, they submitted us all the minutes of the planning board. There are multiple times when they said there was always an option that they could do a 40B. But the planning board doesn't have the right to approve a 40B. So they wouldn't go to the planning board for a 40B anyways. We're the only board that, you know, can stand in for anyone. So I would be in favor for the project as presented.
As would I.
James?
Doug has expressed my concerns.
Certainly has. Mine, too. All right. Well done, Bob.
So then I would, so I'd make a motion to have the...
I think there's just one correction. So where all the units will be affordable, only two will count on the actual inventory with the state because that's at eighty percent or less. But the 100% is still in the affordable tier.
So it still helps out the families, which is a good decision.
It's like a workforce housing type of thing, so it's greatly reduced from market rate.
So it's not going to be substantially different in...
You know, it still helps the workforce housing, so. So then I'd make a motion to have the administrator draft a positive approval with conditions.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Bob and second by James. Would we like to...
Yeah, I guess we can start over with a couple of things.
Go ahead.
So of the three dwelling units, two will be at eighty percent AMI, one will be at 100%. Can make the same statement the administrator said, even though 100% will not count on the rules, it does meet the workforce housing.
Project was reduced by one.
Was reduced by one from four to three. We would be writing in granting of the waivers of minimum lot area, frontage, and minimum average width. We should put in there that it meets all those other zoning bylaw requirements. Dwelling setbacks, lot coverage by structure, lot coverage by structure, parking, paving, put a finding about the designated open space to the rear of the parcel, also a 10-foot vegetated buffer at Lot 1's northerly line and a 5-foot vegetated buffer at Lot 3's northerly line. Properties will be landscaped according to the landscape comments that were in...
No adverse opposition by town boards?
Well...
Referrals, no?
Well, we had one town, we had one, the town planner, but he didn't make a negative referral on the project. He made a negative referral on the covenant. So Norine, as far as the covenant, do we need to grant a waiver of the covenant? Or we just make a finding that the building, you know, the covenant, which was given to us, a building permit was granted for the single house. The improvements were done to the lot, to the...
I think legally, you can't comment on the waiver. You can't change, excuse me, the covenant.
Okay, so could we list that they met the road improvements?
Yes, you can make the findings, but you can't...
I wouldn't even go into that.
Well, just put it in findings. Put the findings that they got a building permit for the single house. I think we should make a finding on, well, it'll be included in there, but just notate Mr. Freeman's letter regarding the covenant. You'll have a shared driveway access for lots two and three. Housing Assistant Corp. will be the lottery agent. The development meets the needs of the Housing Production Plan, Falmouth Housing Production Plan. Each property will have a Title V. Drywells for Lot 1 and the parking area will be H20 load rated. Include referrals from the Affordable Housing Committee and also the Housing Coordinator as a separate filing.
Anything else for findings?
That's a good start. I mean, if she thinks there's some other ones.
Want to move it along to conditions, then?
Yeah, I mean, we do per plans. We won't get a, we won't get a landscape plan, but we have a...
Regular working hours.
Yeah, the working hours that we normally put, which is the seven to seven, no Sundays, and then Saturdays at noon. As far as soil erosion and sediment controls, that'll be...
The town engineering.
The town engineering. And then I think Section 99-1, legible numbers, and they also asked for, when you go through it, they asked for the houses in back to have their numbers stated at the street. Just double-check on referrals. All right, the file's way too big, but on the referrals, I think the water department just stated that it was separate connections, but there was no issue. There was water in the street. Engineering, I know, just was the erosion controls concom. I don't think had any comments at all. But if there's any other referrals that you think were, that we needed a specific condition. And also put in the findings, the description of the houses, the three-bedroom.
So we wouldn't have any height regulations or anything that would...
No, we can list all that as findings when you break down the actual specs of the houses, but they're all within our zoning regulations.
Topography's pretty basic.
Anything else?
No, I think that's it. I mean, if we get the draft and find out we need to add something, can always...
Sure.
Adjust.
Extensions to all of that.
Yeah. Are we looking on timing for extensions there, Bob?
It should be fine. It should be on the cover of the file.
Yeah, it says November 9th.
Yeah, so we're fine.
So we're good. All right. Norine, I'll defer to you. What date is looking good to review the positive?
September 9th would be the earliest. Would either be that or the 23rd.
Go for the 9th, I guess.
Yeah, we'll go for the 9th.
Is there anything else while we're here that you think should be in there?
Everything should be very, pretty quick.
No, it's just, there's been a massive volume of cases.
I know the...
The 40Bs just take...
I don't ever, I don't ever remember being this busy in July and August. That's a busy schedule. All right.
So then a motion to continue to September 9th.
Second.
All right, so the motion was made by...
Did we do a full vote on the...
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
Let's do the full vote on the first.
So first, we'll do the full vote on drafting a positive decision, so the...
As discussed.
That motion was made by Bob and second by James, directing Norine to draft a positive decision for review. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that passes unanimously.
And now a motion to continue to September 9th.
I'll second Ms. Stugan's motion.
All right, motion to continue this to September 9th, made by Bob and second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Attorney Monahan, thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Kevin, what'd you do? What'd you do?
Nothing. That's the worst part.
Skiing.
I was on Nantucket last weekend. I was skiing in Chile, and they actually believed me, because they do.
Cobblestones on the Rosen Crown by chance?
No, I was just, it's Achilles tendonitis. Overuse, understretching. It's not awesome.
All right, so up next, onto our new hearings, we have Application 48-21, Shuldice. 53 Silver Beach Ave. in North Falmouth requesting a special permit to construct a front porch, dormers to the second floor, and a screen porch at the rear of the dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures.
So Application 48-21, William C. Shuldice IV and Susan A. Shuldice, 183 Old Schoolhouse Road, South Burlington, Vermont, has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-3C and 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to construct a front porch, dormers to the second floor, and a screen porch at the rear of the dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 53 Silver Beach Avenue, North Falmouth, Mass.
For referrals. From engineering, uh, one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Silver Beach Ave. is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. Four, a dry well is proposed for the new roof as we typically recommend. Five, we recommend the following condition be included, which is, uh, Section ninety-nine-one, a fixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. Uh, and six, the proposed work to the rear of the house should not have erosion and sediment impacts on the abutting properties because the work is on an existing foundation. The proposed front porch and dry well are close to the public right of way and involve some excavation. We recommend that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project along the front of the parcel. They drew a sample map. And then we defer to the board if planned revisions are warranted or if this can just be addressed as a condition in any approval. Concom project appears to be outside of Concom jurisdiction. Planning board, no comment. Assessors includes lots three forty-seven and three forty-eight. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. A health department, there's a four-bedroom septic system that was installed in 2013, so they have no issues with the project. Water department, the water main and line are on the plans as required. The existing meter pit must be abandoned and the new meter installed inside the home. The existing service should be upgraded to a one-inch, if not already the case. Uh, that's it for referrals, and I don't see any letters submitted.
All right, and for the applicants tonight, we have Attorney Clower.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Bill and Susan Shuldice, the owners of fifty-three Silver Beach Ave. The applicants had hoped to, uh, attend tonight, but were unable to make it. I am joined by Tom Bunker as well. Uh, the applicants are seeking permission to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling at the property. Fifty-three Silver Beach Ave. is located in, in the New Silver area of town, toward the eastern end of that neighborhood. It's a very dense, vibrant, uh, largely seasonal neighborhood. This lot has, uh, ten thousand four hundred and fifty-seven square feet and is located in a residential C zoning district. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet. It's non-conforming, uh, front yard setback being ten point four feet, where twenty-five is required, and side yard setback being nine point eight feet, where ten is required. It's also non-conforming as to lot coverage by structures being twenty point six four percent, where twenty percent is allowed by right and up to twenty-five percent by special permit. The applicants are proposing modest changes to the dwelling. The addition of a small farmer's porch in the front, which will tie into the existing porch, two shed dormers on the second floor, uh, to improve the existing space, and the construction of a screen porch at the, uh, at the rear of the building over the existing deck. These proposed changes will not increase the number of bedrooms, which will remain at four. The existing ridge height will remain the same, at twenty-three feet, six inches. Uh, there will be a small expansion to the footprint by two hundred and twenty-nine square feet, which will result in lot coverage by structures of twenty-two point eight three percent. The front yard setback is going to be very minimally improved, uh, from ten point four to ten point six. Because of the existing non-conformities, this does require a special permit under two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E. Under two forty-three C, uh, the threshold question is, is it substantially more detrimental than what exists? And the board is asked to consider whether or not it creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, we have no new non-conformities being created. There's minimal changes to the existing non-conformities. Uh, though the lot coverage by structure does increase, uh, that, with the issuance of a special permit, that non-conformity is effectively eliminated, and there's no effect on views and vistas of the public. And it is consistent with the neighborhood. Under two forty-sixty-nine E, you're asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Here, there's no real change to the size and height of the structure. Uh, we're not changing the ridge height, uh, and we're not changing the footprint beyond the addition of the, uh, small farmer's porch. There's no impact of views and vistas from public ways. There's no change to the effect of shadow. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments, as it's the same number of bedrooms. This project, as proposed, represents improvements for the applicants, allowing for much more useful space on the second floor. And the front porch lends itself to the social vibrant nature of that neighborhood, which is incredibly engaged. This project will not create any new dimensional non-conformities, will not substan- and it's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. It is in character with the neighborhood and many of the nearby homes. I believe this meets the standards of two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E, and two forty-two sixteen, and that this board can and should, uh, grant the special permit. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions? Bob, do you want to start this off?
Uh, I don't have any questions. Uh, I have one for the administrator later, but that's it.
Sure.
No questions.
Okay.
Just no questions.
No questions for me either. All right, uh, members of the public, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Nothing from the public either. Back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
I'll hold on.
Yeah, just a quick question, just for the administrator, so, um...
No worries.
I, I know that we're now doing these as not modifications, as just new permits. So, um, where the prior permit had them keep that doorway open, our current plan shows that, so we don't have to repeat any of that again. I, I get a little confused sometimes on these older permits to new permits, because sometimes they list very specific things in the older permits. And we used to just modify and just do changes where they were needed, and now they're totally new. So do we have to repeat anything in the older permits?
What type of thing did you...
You know, like where they, they require the, you know, four-foot opening or... It shows on our plan, so that probably covers... And it, and if we approve it with the new one with the four-bedroom septic, that automatically cancels out the restriction they have as a threat. All right, that's, that was my only question.
All right. Make a motion?
Make motion close.
Second.
Motion close made by Scott, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. Uh, it'll be the board's pleasure.
Motion approved with conditions.
Second.
All right, motion approved with conditions made by Bob and second by James. Findings?
Uh, two forty-dash-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E, two forty-two sixteen. Uh, current non-conformity is, uh, front yard setback of ten point four, where twenty-five is required, and side yard nine point eight, where ten is required. And the current lot coverage is twenty point six four percent, which is over the twenty percent. Uh, there will be extremely minimal two-inch improvement on the front yard setback from, um, ten-four to ten-six.
More detrimental? In keeping?
Yeah, yeah, that's the two forty-two sixteen, and then increasing, um, they're increasing bedrooms from three to four. Um, there was a four-bedroom septic system installed in 2013 per the Board of Health referral, so they're fine on the septic.
Part of me to get moved inside?
Yes, we'll do those on the, um, on the conditions, I guess, the...
It's on the plan.
All right, anything else for findings? Conditions?
Oh, just put a finding that there was a previous, just mention the previous special permit, so we know that we're giving them a new one. Uh, so on the conditions, you'd want to put, um, the referrals, so from the water department, the meter pit has to be abandoned and then put inside the house, and they need to have a one-inch service if they don't have it now. Uh, you're going to need these soil and erosion controls just on that one side that they mentioned, which is near the public way.
Per plan.
Yeah, per plan. I'll put a finding that there is a dry well, uh, on the plans for the roof.
Regular hours.
Yeah, construction hours. The normal ones we use. And just per plans, I guess.
All right.
Want to maintain, uh, construction vehicles on the property?
Mm-hmm.
At least need to.
We back up to findings. Did we say that there was no increase in height that was part of the test?
Uh, no, we should put them to finding, um... And also just condition it on the four-bedroom, which is the septic that covers it, so they don't add additional rooms.
All right. Anything else?
Did this one have a... Yeah, just, uh, also put in that they did submit a lot comparison worksheet that shows it's within the range of the other homes in the area.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right, so that was motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We'll get your wheel fixed.
I'll be here for three more hearings tonight.
You put a wheel on that.
All right, up next we have Application forty-nine dash twenty-one, Mallett, eighty-three Chestnut Street in T-Ticket, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild a portion of the existing non-conforming dwelling.
So Application number forty-nine dash twenty-one, Stephen J. Mallett, Nineteenth Colonial Drive, Mansfield, Mass., has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections two forty dash three C and two forty-sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild a portion of the existing non-conforming dwelling on subject property known as eighty-three Chestnut Street, T-Ticket, Mass. For referrals. Uh, so this property is in the Little Pond Sewer System. It does have a gravity sewer connection. It appears the proposed changes will increase the number of bedrooms on the property from three to four. An increased bedroom, uh, up to four is allowed by right under the flow-neutral bylaw, so no flow-neutral bylaw variance is required. If the addition requires a modification to the existing sewer connection on the property, a project representative will need to apply to the Department of Public Works for a sewer connection. Modification permit will require a fifty-dollar permit fee and a plan showing the proposed sewer connection modification. Contractor should locate the existing sewer connection on the property and protect it during construction. The attached sewer connection as built was provided by the property owner's contractor. The town cannot vouch for its accuracy. The contractor should in particular be aware of the locations of the sewer cleanouts and protect them during construction and dig up and repair any pipe fittings damaged during construction. Heavy equipment driving over the cleanouts could break the service line and cause sewer blockage on the property. Uh, from engineering... So from health department, health has no issues because it's on the town sewer and doesn't exceed four. Uh, from engineering, one, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Chestnut Street is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. Four, we, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, or stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. Five, the existing landscaping along the abutting properties on either side of the property and a fence along the rear are not shown on the plan. These landscaping features will protect the abutting properties from erosion and sediment and encroachment during construction. We recommend that erosion controls be set across the front of the property to protect the public right of way. And they also recommend, uh, subsection ninety-nine-one, a fixing of legible numbers required, time limit for compliance with the house number. Conservation staff has no comment on the above reference. It appears outside Concom jurisdiction. Assessors, this will include lot eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and ninety. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. Uh, planning has no comment. Uh, there were bulk calculations in the neighborhood, uh, submitted, and there's no, uh, letters, uh, in favor or opposition.
All right. For the applicant.
Okay, uh, just, uh, my wife and I are going to plan on adding, just to, to, um, removing the first floor, adding a second floor, and making a master bedroom, living room, kitchen area. Uh, the house is just old and needs to be redone, and, uh, we have a chance to, uh, just upgrade it now. I'm Steve Mallett, sorry, eighty-three Chestnut Street. The house now, we're actually going to reduce the, uh, the lot, the, um, the square footage now, um, from twenty-five to twenty-two, uh, percent. It's residential already, so that's not going to be affected. Uh, there'd be no traffic flow, as we've mentioned. We're on town utilities, already town sewer waters. And I think that's about it.
All right, turn it to board questions. James?
I have no questions.
Scott?
No, thank you.
Uh, only question is, um, the comment regarding a dry well on the property or something is, do you have a dry well proposed or...
We're going to add dry wells for the water, yes.
Okay. That's my only question.
All right. Turn it to public comment. Any questions, comments, or concerns out there? All right, seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion closed by Scott and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved with the conditions.
Second.
Motion approved with conditions made by James and, I'm sorry.
Got that backwards.
Scott, James. All right, findings?
All right. Two forty-three C, two forty-sixty, uh, two forty-six E? Oh, no, two forty-sixty-nine E, two forty-two sixteen, not more substantially detrimental. Uh, property is on, uh, the Loom Pond Sewer Service Area. Uh, four bedrooms are allowed by right. They're going from three to four, so there's no flow-neutral bylaw triggered.
Dry well?
Uh, yeah, dry wells will be... Yeah, we'll be doing dry wells. We'll have to just have them added to the plan. Just break down that this includes three lots and... Uh, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and ninety. There were bulk calculations submitted for the area, and it falls within the range of the neighborhood. Uh, it's increasing utilization of the property by the updates.
Reduction in lot coverage by structures from twenty-four-seven to twenty-two?
Perfect.
Reduction in lot coverage by structures, paving and parking, from twenty-nine-two to twenty-six-five. Increase in bulk, but it's in keeping with the neighborhood.
All right, anything else for findings?
No increase in setbacks, right?
No, everything else is staying the same.
All right. Conditions?
Uh, so per plans with the addition of the dry wells, uh, they're going to have to do the erosion sediment controls for the public way. Um, property is limited to four-bedroom, which is allowed on the sewer service area. Norine, I don't know if you put it as a finding or condition, but we should have somewhere in there the comments by Amy Lowell. They, they need to do everything with the sewer connections and have them checked in case there's a problem. Uh, work hours, the seven to seven, uh, what is it, twelve to seven, and then no Sundays?
Sure.
No, twelve to seven. Did you say twelve to seven?
Eight, eight to four on Saturday.
Eight to four. Uh, and then that, um, that subsection ninety-nine-one.
Do you want to put your dry wells in the conditions as well?
Yeah, we might as well put it that dry wells will be...
Per revised plans for dry wells.
Per revised plan.
That came through testimony, right?
Yeah. Easy way to do it.
All right, anything else?
We get per plans, right?
That was a motion to approve with conditions. Was it made by Scott?
Yeah.
Second by James? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Mr. Mallett, thank you. All right. Up next, I was just going to ask Attorney Clower, how do we pronounce your client's name?
Fusigna.
Fusigna, okay.
Fusigna, all right, so application, it's funny because I was going to ask him anyway. Uh, Application fifty-dash-twenty-one, Fufusigna, ninety-two Bridge Street in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a pool exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures.
I hate pronouncing the last names wrong. Okay, Application, uh, fifty-dash-twenty-one, James R. Fusigna, Sixth Kimball Road, Hopkinton, Mass., has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections two forty dash sixty-nine E, Code of Falmouth, to allow a pool exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures on subject property known as ninety-two Bridge Street, East Falmouth, Mass. So from engineering, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Bridge Street is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. From CONCOM, Conservation Commission voted in negative determination in December of 2019 for the construction of an in-ground pool and screened-in porch. The plan of reference is attached with a final revision date of eleven eighteen nineteen. The plan submitted to the ZBAA is different than approved by the CONCOM and has a final revision date of four twenty-five twenty-one. The applicant should contact the conservation office to discuss if additional permitting is necessary through our department. And they attached the plan and the conditions that they did. Planning board, no comment. Health department, no issues with health. If using a sand filter requiring backwashing, then a drywell or seizable method to contain the backwash on the applicant's property needs to be considered. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. And that's, that's it.
All right. Attorney Clower?
Good evening again. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in town, and I represent Jim Fusigna, the owner of Ninety-two Bridge Street. This property is located in one of my favorite neighborhoods in town, actually. I've always referred to it as the Bayview Neighborhood in East Falmouth, but it's located at the southern end of Acapescot Peninsula. This lot is fifteen thousand square feet in the RB zoning district. There is a three-bedroom dwelling with a footprint of approximately, just under three thousand square feet. That dwelling is conforming to all setback and lot coverage requirements. The applicant has owned this property for a little over two years and has actually since relocated here permanently with his wife. And like many other homeowners who've been trapped at home for the past eighteen months, has decided that he wanted a pool. The addition of the pool will result in lot coverage by structure of just over twenty percent, twenty-point-nine percent. And as such, we are here tonight seeking a special permit under two forty-sixty-nine E. That section states that lot coverage by structure may be allowed up to twenty-five percent by special permit of this board. And you're asked to again consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow, impacts on views and vistas, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embainments. This is somewhat unique of an application because our trigger for this special permit is a pool, which is certainly a structure, but it's not a structure as envisioned within that section of the bylaw. The dwelling, which is really what that would govern, is entirely by right. The addition of the pool will have no impact on the size and height of the dwelling in and of itself, won't affect the neighborhood. There's no effect of shadow, there's no impact of use on vistas, and there's no effect of nitrogen. The proposal certainly isn't more, isn't substantially more detrimental than what exists, and it won't cause any adverse effects. There's no new nonconformities here, and it meets the standards of two forty-sixty-nine E and two forty-two sixteen. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have, but otherwise I would ask that you grant the special permit.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. Bob, you want to start us off?
So I guess my only question will be, it'll have to do with the pool equipment. So on that filter, is that, is that covered by anything, or is that just sitting on a pad?
I don't know. I don't know anything about that.
And do you know where they're storing any of the pool equipment?
I don't know.
That's my only questions.
All right, Scott?
Attorney Clower, your lot coverage calculations, the concrete patio is within those calculations, right?
The lot coverage by structure, patio is not considered a structure typically, so we did not include the patio in those calculations. Patio would fall into lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking has always been my understanding.
So I guess, do we have those calculations?
Yeah, I just have a question on that. So I thought with pools, because they have to have that section connected to them, that the act, they have to have that patio space, whatever it is required, that that was considered structure? Because it's required with a pool, it's part of the... And then we had the talks on another one, and we had comments from different.
Yeah, I think whatever patio you choose that's on grade, that is, surrounding a pool.
Yeah, I think the question was is.
Separate from the pool itself.
I think it's, the question was with the pool, it's actually part of the pool, it's actually.
So typically with a pool, you have the lip, which is, you know, about twelve inches in width. And then, and then beyond that, there's usually a bit of a dividing line, and beyond that you have a patio typically. You don't typically see a continuous pore from the patio to the pool edge.
And that's what we have here.
Well, I mean, that's what it's showing in the plan. I think the, I don't, I don't know how some, and concrete is not my business, but I can't see how somebody would do a continuous pore of the pool edge onto a patio. We measured to the edge of the pool, which is, I think, how we've typically done it. But I, my understanding has always been that the patio would not be counted as a structure for that purpose.
So similarly, if you had a house and they had a concrete patio or whatever type of patio.
I'm good.
Back, you would separate the house from the patio, and similarly with the pool, somebody might have, you know, a small pool, you know, patio area, and somebody might have more substantial, so.
Thanks.
James, anything?
Project looks good. My only concern was the comment from CONCOM.
Yeah, they just match.
That's my only concern.
So they had originally, they had originally thought about doing a pool when they were doing some renovations to the house about two years ago, and have since come back and revised the pool plan. I know that Mr. Landis-Cali, our engineer on this, has reached out to CONCOM directly. Will of course have to cooperate and comply with whatever CONCOM's requirements are, because we're not going to get a building permit otherwise.
You don't know what the differences were, though?
I don't. I wasn't involved in the twenty-nineteen planning.
That pool filter, Attorney Clower, do you happen to know the proximity to the other homes in the area from?
I don't, I don't know the location of the other homes off, off that site.
All right. Public comment. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Not seeing any. Back to the board.
Motion to close.
Seconding.
All right, motion to close by James and seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes.
All right, passes unanimously. Right?
Yeah, just so you know, the, it looks like the plan difference is the, is the pad for the pool equipment.
All right. So the hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. And as for any decisions by the board?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Seconding Mr. Morris's motion.
James making the motion for approval with conditions and seconded by Scott. Findings?
Two forty-sixty-nine E. Mr. Dugan usually has the.
Uh, two forty-two sixteen. The lot coverage going from nineteen percent to twenty-point-nine. There is a pad, three-by-seven pad for the pool filter. CONCOM, its comments are their plans don't match our plans, and they need to match.
Note letters of.
Opposition.
Opposition.
No letters of opposition. No answers to.
We have to put that it was previously applied for, but that doesn't have.
No.
Applicant agrees to conform to any CONCOM.
We'll have to put a condition, CONCOM, and I guess the only question would be, I don't know how you write it in, if, if there's anything. I guess they wouldn't add anything. It'd be up with our plan anyways, right? So there's nothing CONCOM could change where they'd have to come back here again.
No, so what happens is that if you approve and it doesn't match what Conservation Commission approved, they won't sign off on the building permit, so the applicant's now got notice that they have an opportunity now to correct with conservation, so it's not held up on the other end?
It just put a finding that we did not count the patio as structure.
All right, conditions? Per plan. Did you want that condition about reconciling with?
Yeah, we have both findings and conditions. Probably good, good idea.
And you should put. They didn't actually refer it, but they mentioned that thing, the engineering about that backwash filters. I hope we could just put that in the findet.
Was that port of health?
Port of health.
No, uh, yeah, you're right. Wait a sec, maybe it's. Because they've been adding that in on the lot, so we should probably.
All right, anything else for either findings or conditions?
No, and it was health, yeah, to. I guess you could put it in, you could put it in a condition if, if a sand filter is required. If using a sand filter requiring backwashing, then a drywell or suitable method to contain the backwash on the applicant's property would be required.
All right. All right, so that was a motion made by James.
It just, it just, before we close, if it does show, we should always also put the thing in there about the fencing?
It's on the plan.
It's on the plan.
It's along the property line if I saw it correctly.
Yeah, just make a comment to it on the finding, just because we're doing it on the other pools, we're mentioning the fencing.
It says proposed fence, so.
Again, Bob?
Yeah.
All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by James and seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, up next, we have application fifty-one dash twenty-one, Abbey's Realty LLC, Thirteen Abbey's Lane in North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
Just give me one second.
Sure. Oh, is this the one with?
Yeah, but I didn't know about it, so I don't have to read that in.
No.
Okay.
Well, I think prior, well, prior to you, sorry, prior to you reading it in.
He'll make a.
James, disclosure?
Not this one.
Not this one? Round one. Abbey's, Abbey's Realty.
Oh, it's out of port.
All right, figured it out.
Now I'm completely confused.
I was confused for a second, too.
Yeah, so is I. What is that? All right, application fifty-one dash twenty-one, Abbey's Realty LLC, Twenty-one Wachusett Road, Wellesley, Mass., applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as Thirteen Abbey's Lane, North Falmouth, Mass. Four referrals. Health has no issues with this project, as the proposed project shows six bedrooms, and there was a six-bedroom septic system installed in June of 2021. Engineering, one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Abbey's Lane and Marion Road are public rights of way in this area. The proposed work shown will require filing a permit with the engineering division. Both the closure of the existing driveway on Abbey's Lane and the new driveway on Marion Road can be covered under one driveway permit. There are some minor modifications in notes that we will require to approve the permit. Adherence to the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document will be required. We requested the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from engineering prior to closing the hearing, or that be included as a special permit condition. And it would say the applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Two, as mentioned above, for approval of the driveway permit, we will require erosion and sediment controls to protect the public right of way in the town's downstream stormwater system. Given the close proximity of work to the abutters and the small size of this lot, additional erosion and sediment controls and limit of work should be established to protect the abutting properties. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls to protect the abutters. We recommend the following in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Three, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Four, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. Five, we recommend the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells or stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. We also recommend subsection ninety-nine-one, a fixing of legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. From Historical Commission, the Historical Commission approved the demo delay waiver. Please see the attached two letters. One is from Ed Haddad Chairman. At its hearing of March second, twenty-twenty-one, the Historical Commission voted to waive the demolition delay period. The demolition of the existing house at Thirteen Abbey's Lane, North Falmouth. However, the commission had concerns with some design elements of the replacement house. The renderings of the new house appear to have two front doors as to make the house look like a duplex. Commission felt that would be inappropriate for the streetscape. Please feel free to contact me for clarification. And then from the Historical Commission, March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one. At its meeting of March second, twenty-twenty-one, the Falmouth Historical Commission voted to grant a waiver under the demolition delay bylaw. This is the wrong property. So they have a regarding waiver of delay of Thirteen Abbey's Lane, but it is for three forty-five Grand Avenue. So was there another letter?
You know what, I bet they just had an issue where they used a previous letter and.
Might be a script there.
All right, so if they had an issue, well, we can ask. With the two doors, we can see if they took care of it. No, they're actually pretty detailed. From the Water Department, service and main are on the plans as required. The service is three-quarter fit from a six-inch main. We recommend it gets upgraded to a one-inch for better flow and pressure. New water meter will have to be located inside the home. Proposed project does not appear to fall within conservation jurisdiction from CONCOM. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. And no letters submitted.
All right, and for the applicant, Attorney Clower?
Good evening again. As a chair for the record, my name is Kevin Clower, and I'm here tonight representing Andrew and Lauren Crowley in their capacity as managers of Abbey's Realty LLC. I'm joined tonight by Tom Catalano of Catalano Architects and Rob Dewar of Bracken Engineering. The Crowleys are seeking to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling at Thirteen Abbey's Lane. This is located in McGansett on a small side street running between Chester and County Road overlooking McGansett Harbor. It is a dense, upscale, and again largely seasonal neighborhood. This particular lot is seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet, and it's located in a residential B zoning district. Presently, we have a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of just over two thousand square feet. It's non-conforming to your front yard setbacks, being six feet where twenty-five is required. Side yard setback to the north being four feet. Side yard setback to the south being eight feet, in both cases ten feet being required. And lot coverage by structures being twenty-eight point one percent where twenty is allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit. This property's been in Lauren and Andrew's family for a number of years, but they've recently taken ownership of it. They have a young, growing family, and they want to create a family retreat that's going to be theirs for many years to come, and it's really been designed with that in mind. The existing structure is actually in pretty poor condition structurally. There's some deficiencies. The existing foundation is unreinforced masonry. Jim Halliday, who went through and is the contractor on this, noted a number of structural issues for the existing property. And as noted, the Historical Commission did grant a waiver of the demolition delay bylaw for this. We had slightly different plans at that time, so the comments about the two front doors actually aren't on the plans that we're showing tonight, so I just wanted to point that out. As I noted, they're proposing to raise the existing dwelling and construct a new six-bedroom home. There is a new six-bedroom Title V system that was just recently installed. The proposed structure will maintain a similar footprint and size as to the existing structure, but will improve the existing nonconformities. The lot coverage by structure will remain the same, proposed at twenty-eight point one percent. The front yard setback is improved from six feet to eleven feet. Side yard setback to the north is eliminated as a nonconformity. That setback is now proposed at ten. The side yard setback to the south is improved from eight feet to nine feet. And there is a slight increase in height that's being proposed. The existing ridge is thirty-one feet nine inches, and we are proposing thirty-four feet eight inches. ridge is 31 feet 9 inches, and we are proposing 34 feet 8 inches. So this requires a special permit under both 243C and 24069E. And in 3C, the threshold question again is, is it substantially more detrimental than what exists when considering whether or not it creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood? We have no new non-conformity being created. We have a non-conforming front yard and side yard setback, either improved or eliminated. The non-conforming lock coverage will remain the same. There's no effect on views and vistas. It is consistent with the neighborhood, and the lock coverage by structures, paving, and parking will remain conforming at 30.4%, well below the 40% that's allowed. In the residential B zoning, we can have lock coverage in excess of 20% by special permit. And again, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effects of shadow on adjacent properties, the impact on views and vistas, and affecting nitrogen on coastal abeyments. We did submit a lot comparison worksheet confirming that this proposed home is in line with many of the homes in the area. There's no real impact of views and vistas from the public way, because again, as with other cases we've talked about, the view is away from this house. It's downhill towards the water. The building will be only slightly larger than what's currently there. And it's worth noting that the applicant's family actually owns the property directly abutting to the north and across the street. There's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments because there is a septic system that was recently installed, designed for six bedrooms. This proposal is a significant improvement over the existing conditions, and it's a design that was done intentionally to fit the long-term needs of the applicant and their family. It will not create any new dimensional non-conformities, and as I've noted, it will improve or eliminate existing non-conformities. It is in character with the neighborhood and the surrounding homes, and I believe that it meets the requirements of 243C, 24069E, and 24216. At this point, I, along with Rob and Tom, would be happy to address any questions that you guys might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions? Bob, do you want to start us off?
No, just a quick question just regarding the historic. So you got approved by them on March 2nd, and then the architectural show that they're April 21st. So are these the same architectural...
No, they're different. And historic, when they approve a waiver of a demo delay bylaw, they don't actually approve the house that's being constructed. They approve whether or not you can take down the house that exists.
I only ask because in their last one, they had concerns with...
Sure, no, that, that...
So I just want to make sure that there's...
Yeah, that is not this plan, so they...
And do you have, do you have a copy of their actual letter, since I don't have one here?
I, uh, do I?
Said they submitted two letters, but I don't have...
I don't have it here. I have it saved on my, on my computer at the office. I did not bring it with me, though. So there were, basically, there were two front doors. What they perceived as two front doors facing Abbey's Lane. What we're looking at here is the view from Abbey's Lane, and as you'll see, there, this is really, there's not two front doors as they were concerned with.
And then what were the other architectural features that were changed as of that April 21st? Anything besides the doors?
A lot.
So it's only in the demolition delay log to the age, or it's actually historic? So do they have any purview over changes?
No, it's just on the list of historically significant structures. And when they, when they do a demo delay waiver, again, they're not approving the house that's coming up. They offer comments sometimes, but they're not approving the house that's being proposed. What you're saying to them is that there's no point in saving this house. There's no point in making us wait 12 months to tear this house down because of its current condition.
So do you know if they had any other, even though they commented in the first line, did they have any other concerns architecturally from what's being presented now?
I don't believe so.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, Scott?
I have a couple of questions, but I'm not going to hit Kevin with them. It's more of a builder.
Well, we do have the engineering and architect.
I'd love to ask a couple quick questions.
I appreciate that, though. Thank you.
Oh, you got a hurt foot.
I'm only wearing a...
One night, this compensation.
Just a couple. Obvi... Obviously, oh, you're going to have to, you're going to have to...
My name is Rob Dewar, here with Bracken Engineering on behalf of the applicants.
Aye. Obviously, it's an H20 system.
Correct, yep.
Would you guys be affecting the demo from that parking area there to keep all the, all the goings-on off those tight roads?
Yeah, so the backyard, the septic system was designed with H20 loading in mind, basically for two reasons. One is that that is now the parking area of the proposed dwelling, and also that is the only area really with access to the lot with any space to it. So that's where all the demolition and construction vehicles will be accessing from.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, James?
I have no questions.
Attorney Clower, would you be amenable to a height cert at framing?
I would expect it, quite honestly.
All right.
Good expectation.
I was going to say, it's very kind of you.
Conditioned at this point.
Just wanted to get it out there. All right, public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns from anyone?
I just have, so it's Lynn Greenwood. I'm at 9 Abbey's Lane, so I'm the little one beside it. My first issue, not issue, comment or question is, is another abutter that couldn't be here because of a medical issue in her family, and how would she direct questions or comments?
Would have been in writing.
Do you do that after the fact?
It would have been preferable if it was via email or in writing ahead of time.
Ahead of time, well, I mean, she, her mother was ill. She had to leave the state.
Did she convey to you what her concerns might be?
No, no, sorry, sorry.
You have to give my card this week.
Okay, perfect. So my, my only question is for you guys.
Sorry, if you could ask, sorry, it's through the...
Okay, well, I'm, and mine's more of a comment. So when the front porch came off when they first bought the house, because I'm on a crawl space with a slab, so I don't, my house is, you know, an old, is, you know, not substantial, and it shook like when that, it was only about three digger, it was a huge digger that took the front down, and it was probably three wax at it, but my whole house just was like an earthquake. I basically got knocked out of bed, me and my husband. So I just want to be careful, you know, because we're so close and I'm on sand, and I don't have, don't have a basement that, you know, that you guys are, that's, that's all. It's just a comment. I want to make sure my house is still standing. That's all. After, you know, because it's so close, which is... That's, that's my only comment.
Thank you. Did you have questions?
For Kevin?
Yep.
Any, any demolition contractor that's going to be working on it's going to have insurance anyway, so, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and they'll be careful anyway, I'm sure. Did you have a...
No, I just had a comment for her if, so if you have any concerns of possible damage...
What's that?
Just, just document what the house looks like now.
Okay.
It's, it's just the easiest way to do it.
Video.
And then if there's an issue, you can contact the contractor.
Video.
Yeah, video it out.
Yeah.
Anyone else out there? Any questions, comments, or concerns?
My name is Ken Tadlebaum. I'm at 10 Abbey's Lane, so I'm here. I don't have anything specific. Just constructions at normal hours. You know, I'm a good tree between me and this, and Andrew and Lauren are my, are my next-door neighbors now at 12 Abbey's.
So that's a supporting statement?
I don't know.
Try to pin you on one way or the other. Is it a supporting statement, or?
Look, Lynn's, Lynn's my neighbor. I, you know, this, this home is a buddy of her property. This is more relevant to her. I'm going to be here a year from now when they try to take, when they want to take 12 Abbey's Lane down, understand what they're going to do with that. That's, that's my concern.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else out there? All right, not seeing any. Back to the board. Any follow-up questions?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion proposed by Scott, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. It would be the board's pleasure.
So, motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second it.
Motion approved with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Findings?
240-3C, 24069E, 24216, not substantially more detrimental. Put a finding in that they did go in front of historic commission for demolition delay bylaw, which was approved. We don't currently have that letter in the files, so we'll need a copy of it.
I can provide that.
Also, there were architectural changes after that approval date. It's testimony that historic commission does not have any jurisdiction over those architectural changes.
New H20 six-bedroom septic system?
Yep, for six bedrooms.
Six bedrooms.
H20...
List the non-conformities of the front yard, side yard, et cetera.
List the improvements and the deletion of them?
That's not an easy thing to do on Abbey's Lane either.
No.
Right.
And then the, we can add in the comments by engineering, but we'll have to put them in as a condition.
New parking on site toward the rear, and testimony had it that all construction vehicles would remain on site off the street.
And also, they did a bulk calculation.
That was amenable to a height certification at framing?
Definitely isn't keeping with the neighborhood.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Sure is.
I think that's one of the prettiest streets in town.
Anything else for findings?
No opposition.
Yeah, no. Oh, I'll put in a finding that you can actually mention that one of the neighbors had an issue, was worried about any damage to the property during construction.
Did you put in there that there were, she was encouraged by the board to video previous to demolition?
And that she was also, was also recommended by applicant's counsel to contact her if she had any issues. Contact him.
Anything else for findings?
Yes, sir.
Conditions?
So per plans, height cert at framing. Both issues with the engineering department, one on the driveway permit, so applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction, and they shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Also, construction of the project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document.
I'd like to make a suggestion that there be some kind of police detail on that front, that closed street to the front of that house, because there's no way for equipment to take that down from the road.
Yep, we can add that in.
At least for that part.
Demo?
For the demo, yeah, because they're going to have to pull that house back to them.
Also, they must have dry wells or stormwater infiltration measures for roof runoff. Also, subsection 99-1, affixing of legible numbers required and time limit for compliance. Upon completion of construction, applicant shall post the address for this residence per that subsection. And the water department.
Water service update.
Did the, the water service be upgraded to a one-inch? And the new meter installed inside the renovated home?
Okay.
We did the construction hours, right?
Said height cert already, right?
Yeah, height cert. We got it framing.
Construction hours usual.
Construction hours.
All right.
Police detail.
Anything else? So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Now get off that wheel.
I got one more.
Sit down.
I'm good.
All right. Up next, we have application 52...
Can we take a five-minute?
Yeah. So Ashley can turn this heat, this AC down and the room off, and then we can turn it back off?
Quick five-minute break, so we can take care of the AC, and Attorney Clower can take a seat for a minute.
Here we go. Here again.
All right, we are back. Up next, we have application fifty-two dash twenty-one, North fifteen Sunset Point Road in North Falmouth. Requesting a special permit to remove existing deck at the rear of garage, remodel and construct a second floor addition to the garage.
Mr. Chairman, before the hearing opens, if I may.
You certainly may, James Scott.
Mr. Clower, for you and for the purpose of the audience and the public who may be watching at home, I did file a disclosure pursuant to the conflict of interest law regarding this project. I do not believe a conflict exists, but there could be the appearance of one. I do know Mrs. North, she is very good friends with some people who I am very good friends with. She is also employed at the Barnstable County Courthouse, which I'm at from time to time. I did file the requisite disclosure of this. I don't believe it to be a conflict, but I wanted the applicant's attorney to be aware before the hearing started in case there was an objection.
I have no objection. If we conflicted out everyone who was friend of a friend in Falmouth, we'd have a problem.
All right, James, thank you for that disclosure.
Thank you.
And Attorney Clower, I'm assuming you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, perfectly fine. Thank you.
All right.
So, application fifty-two dash twenty-one, Michael H. and Allison R. North, fifteen Sunset Point Road, North Falmouth, Mass. Have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C, the code of Falmouth, to remove an existing deck at the rear of the garage, remodel and construct a second floor addition to the garage. On subject property known as fifteen Sunset Point Road, North Falmouth. Referrals. Letter from Scott McGann dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Fifteen Sunset Point, and he said August seventh, two thousand, has a Board of Health variance granted for setback waivers to a property line. That decision came with a restriction to four bedrooms. See attached land court doc nine oh nine point two five one dash eight dash twenty-eight dash two thousand. The system itself is also sized for four. I've attached the recorded decision in septic design. The proposed great room meets both Title V and FHR fifteen point zero zero definition of a bedroom affording privacy, et cetera. The great room would be considered to be the fifth. And then he just attached the code in Title V for a bedroom, a room providing privacy intended primarily for sleeping, consisting of all of the following. Floor space of no less than seventy square feet. B for new construction, a ceiling height of no less than seven feet three inches, effective nine nine. Two oh one, and then two oh one six three one O CMR, Department of Environmental Protection, fifteen point zero zero two. C for existing house, infomobile home, the ceiling height of no less than seven feet. An electrical service and ventilation, at least one window. Living rooms, dining rooms, kitchens, halls, bathrooms, unfinished cellars and unheated storage areas over garages are not considered bedrooms. Single-family dwellings shall be presumed to have at least three bedrooms where the total number of rooms for a single-family dwelling exceed eight. Not including bathrooms, hallways, unfinished cellars and unheated storage areas, the number of the bedrooms presumed shall be calculated. By dividing the total number of rooms by two, then rounding down to the next lowest number, the applicant may design a system using flows for a smaller number of bedrooms than are presumed in this definition by granting to the approved authority. A deed restriction limiting the number of bedrooms for a smaller number. Engineering, the application was reviewed to impacts the public rights of way and public utilities. Sunset Point Road is a private right of way in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters of public rights of way. Four, dry wells are proposed for the new roof area as typically recommended. Five, where this project falls in the jurisdiction of CONCOM, we recommend that the board defer to commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. Planning board, no comment. Water department, the water service in main must be on the plans. The service is three-quarter fed from a six-inch main. We recommend upgrading to a one-inch. The existing meter pit must be abandoned and the new water meter installed in the home. CONCOM voted in negative determination to approve the above reference under the same plan of reference submitted to the ZBA and detached. Conservation staff have no additional comment. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. And that is it.
All right, and for the applicant?
Good evening again, Mr. Chair. Record, my name is Kevin Clower, and I'm here tonight representing Mike and Allison North, the owners of fifteen Sunset Point Road and the applicants in this matter. They are seeking permission to alter a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on their property. This property is located near the end of Wild Harbor Road, really overlooking Buzzards Bay. It's a, the lot is eighteen thousand three hundred square feet and it's in the residential B zoning district. Presently, we have a four-bedroom, single-family home with a footprint of just over thirty-five hundred square feet. And it's non-conforming to front yard setback being seventeen point two feet where twenty-five is required and nine point four feet where ten is required for a side yard setback to the west. The applicants are proposing the addition of living space above the existing garage. They have a young family and as their older kids are entering their teens, they're found that they really need more space and entertaining area. Other than the space above the garage, there are some minor interior renovations to improve the existing layout and flow and also a redesign of the deck at the rear of the house. The result of this is no impact on the front yard setback. The elimination of the non-conforming side yard setback, the side yard setback will go from nine point four feet to eleven point four. Lot coverage by structures will remain the same and conforming at nineteen point three percent. And there is no change in the number of bedrooms, which will remain at four. Our architect did speak with Mr. McGann and submitted correspondence explaining why this wasn't in fact a bedroom. At the top of the stairs, there's no privacy afforded by it, the stairs are a half-wall. And we've seen that before where there's no door at the top of the stairs and there's no privacy offered by that where the half-wall, that it's not deemed to be a bedroom. I'm not sure if Mr. McGann got a referral back in there, but I know that was correspondence between Chris Warner and Scott regarding that. This does require a special permit under two forty-three C, which again begs the question of is it substantially more detrimental than what exists? You're asked to consider whether or not it creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformity created. The non-conforming side yard setback is eliminated. There's no effect on views and vistas of public way, and it is consistent with the neighborhood. This doesn't create any new dimensional non-conformities, and I do believe it complies and I do believe it is in character, and I don't think there's much more to say beyond that. So I think it meets the standards of two forty-three C, two forty-two sixteen. I'd be happy to address any questions that you have.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. James, any questions?
It's a beautiful project.
Nope. Scott?
Attorney Clower, the north elevation, that garage door below grade, is that for beach stuff?
It's, yeah, beach stuff, boat stuff. It's been there for a long time. It's actually kind of a cool little feature.
Oh, different. That's all I have.
Hello?
Uh, no, just that I double-checked the filing. There is no updated correspondence that we have from health.
All right. I don't have any questions myself, so, members of the public, any questions, comments or concerns? Being none.
Mr. Chairman, make motion to close.
Second.
All right, motion to close made by Scott. Second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. Be the board's pleasure.
Make motion to approve. Conditions.
All right, motion approved with conditions made by Scott, second by Bob. Findings?
Two forty-three C, two forty-two sixteen. No new non-conformities, in keeping with the neighborhood. No change in bedroom count. Side yard setback eliminated. No increase in elevation.
So on the side yard, just say it's the west side yard going from nine four to eleven four. There is a four-bedroom deed restricted variance by the health department. The health department submitted a referral saying that they would consider the family room a fifth bedroom. Testimony by applicant is that the architect has talked to the health department and they have eliminated privacy of that room, but we don't have any update in the file.
All right, anything else?
They did, they did mention that there was gonna be some interior. That doesn't need to be in the findings, does it? Interior modifications? There wouldn't be another permit anywhere.
No, I just don't know, how do you?
No, that's right. Yeah, I retract.
What's the best way to condition with health? Condition that health approved the final plan?
Well, I think if you want to approve, it would be contingent on, Board of Health still has to sign off on the permit anyway.
So just condition a sign up for the health department, the family room is no longer considered a fifth bedroom.
Yeah.
Right, and if they disagree with that, they won't sign the building permit.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Just, I found the elevation showing that.
Yeah, but through testimony, you said there was no increase in elevation, right?
They're adding a second story. But I meant elevation rendering, just it's a cross-section showing the open stairwell.
Anything else for findings?
I made a disclosure, potential conflict, and there was no objection by the applicant's attorney.
All right, conditions?
That's per plan.
The one we mentioned with the health department.
Normal, the working hours, the normal working hours.
Working hours, that the water service be upgraded to a one-inch. Listing meter pit must be abandoned and then installed inside the house.
Being that there's gonna be new gutters on the second floor, there's downspout drainage proposed, right?
So we can just, we can just condition it on?
No, I see him.
On dry wells for?
Yeah, the dry wells are on the plane.
And then we'll condition on CONCOM. Along with erosion and sediment controls, it'll all be through CONCOM.
So I think there've been some circumstances where conservation has reviewed proposals, and even though they may have jurisdiction, they may not issue conditions. So what I would propose is that you use engineering's soil erosion and sediment control as a backup if conservation doesn't issue those.
All right, so.
Give us a baseline for it anyway.
Yeah, so you can just write that however, so that they would be the backup.
All right, that's good. Anything else?
No, we did the work hours, right?
I'm sorry. So if we're all set?
Yeah, I think that's.
It's a motion to approve with conditions made by Scott, second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Now get off a bit.
Now I'm gonna go. I'll leave you guys alone.
All right, so that does it for our new hearings. On to our open meeting items. Up first, we have voting minutes, June seventeenth, July first and July eighth.
We're tabling first and eighth.
Tabling first and eighth. So that leaves us with June seventeenth, as everyone had a chance to review, June seventeenth.
Make motion to approve minutes to June seventeenth.
Second.
Motion to approve June seventeenth made by Scott, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And again, we're tabling July first, July eighth. Next up, we have reviewing the draft decision with a vote anticipated for application fifty-five dash twenty, RLBE LLC.
So everybody has their.
Rebecca Anne Lane, Lot two, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. Voting numbers on this project are myself, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Keren and Scott Zalinski. Ed is not with us tonight, but James has participated in all of the other previous hearings concerning this application. So he would be appointed as a voting member for tonight.
Okay, and everyone has their copies of the draft, right?
Correct.
We do.
So what I'll do is I'll go through the findings first. I'll just pause after each one, and that way if you have a comment on a finding, we can add it in. If not, we'll just vote at the end on the findings.
All right.
Also findings, so number one, application for a comprehensive permit was filed with the town clerk on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Two, the applicant checked off limited dividend organization on the application submitted to the zoning board of appeals. The applicant submitted a certificate of organization creating a limited liability company, RLBE LLC, signed June first, twenty twenty. Three, the applicant submitted a deed dated October sixteen, nineteen eighty-six, listing owners as Richard and Nancy McCrone. Four, the applicant submitted a purchase and sale agreement dated October thirty-first, twenty twenty, with an extension to December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, with RLBE LLC as buyer to demonstrate site control. Five, the applicant submitted a project eligibility letter from the Massachusetts Housing Financing Agency dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty. Six, the subsidy program is proposed to be the New England Fund. Seven, according to DHCD, the town has not achieved the statutory minimum affordable housing threshold set forth in MGL, chapter forty B, subsection twenty, or seven sixty CMR fifty-six point zero three. Eight, the hearings were opened on November fifth, twenty twenty, following an executed agreement for extension of statutory hearing, decision and filing deadline. Filed with the town clerk on October sixth, twenty twenty. Hearings were continued on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, and May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and June tenth, twenty twenty-one. Nine, lot two, Rebecca Anne Lane, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. Assessor's map number thirty-two oh one oh oh six oh oh two, which is the premises, is roughly a long rectangle with two hundred and twelve point oh one frontage on Rebecca Anne Lane on the east side.
Sir, word feet there, sorry.
Oh, okay, two hundred and twelve point oh one feet. On Rebecca Anne Lane east side, the parcel also contains a long, narrow strip of land that runs southerly to East Falmouth Highway. There is forty-eight point one five feet of frontage on East Falmouth Highway, immediately proximate to the entrance of Timothy Bourne Cartway from East Falmouth Highway. Ten, the premises comprises fifty-eight thousand five hundred, fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-two square feet of undeveloped land, which is one point three four acres. Eleven, the premises is cited in the single-resident C zoning district. Surrounding zoning is also single-resident seeded in the north, east and west. The land to the south is zone business three. Twelve, a legal opinion was submitted to demonstrate that the undeveloped premises had not legally merged with the abutting developed parcel of land. Prepared by Kevin P. Clower II, Amen Clower LOP, thirty-nine Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass., dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. The abutting parcel, seven three eight East Falmouth Highway, is in common ownership. Thirteen, the premises is not in a wetland or flood hazard area. Fourteen, the premises is cited in a stabilization area zone around the upper portion of Bourne Pond. The proposal is within one thousand plus or minus feet of the northernmost limit of the protected segment of the pond. Fifteen, a triangular sliver of property cited between the subject lot and street is owned by another party. This reportedly limits the ability to change the proposed driveway configuration and is identified by the assessor as lot A. Sixteen, the original application requested five duplex buildings totaling ten units, three of which would be affordable. This will result in thirty percent affordable housing where the minimum required is twenty-five percent. The proposal included one three-bedroom unit, three one-bedroom units and six two-bedroom units, each with one bathroom for a development total of eighteen bedrooms. Seventeen, the proposal has been revised to eliminate the three-bedroom unit. The final unit configuration will be two one-bedroom units, both in building one, and eight two-bedroom units, buildings two, three, four and five. Eighteen, the buildings are proposed to each compromise fifteen hundred and sixty square feet of living area.
Price?
Yeah, each comprise. Seven hundred and eighty square feet per unit within a single story with a full basement, front porch and bulkhead access for the basement. Uh, nineteen, the doorways are proposed to be two point eight feet, thirty-two inches wide for wheelchair access and will be handicapped adaptable. Twenty, the applicant stated that the units had handicap visitable features. The board noted that the interior of the units compromised a single floor, which was handicap accessible, with a first-floor bedroom and doorway of sufficient width at two point eight feet, thirty-two inches. However, the units themselves were not accessible due to access only by exterior stairs. The applicant stated that they would purchase a ramp, which would be installed upon request of the prospective or current tenant, to make the exterior accessible. Two parking spaces are provided per unit, plus an additional two guest spaces totaling twenty-two parking spaces for the development. One parking space shall be designed handicapped. Um, I just have one question on, I'm gonna go back up one, on the, the applicant said that they had purchased a ramp which be installed upon request of the prospective or current tenant, to make exterior accessible. Should we have in there that the testimony was that they would have to reserve? I mean, at one point, they said you'd have to call a day or two in advance to schedule it.
Well, I think what they were indicating was that you couldn't call and they would necessarily come over right this minute, that they...
So I just didn't want this to sound like if a request is made, it's just done, does it sound that way, the way this is?
I wouldn't necessarily think that you need to specify, I mean, what, what would be the?
A ramp would be available upon request of whoever.
Uh, twenty-three, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-two, uh, two parking spaces are provided per unit, plus an additional two guest spaces totaling twenty-two parking spaces for the development. One parking space shall be designated handicapped. The applicant, uh, number twenty-three, the applicant obtained an access right-of-way and utility easement agreement, which was executed by John L. Drooly, trustee, Kenyon's Village Realty Trust, dated July ninth, twenty-twenty, for the right to pass and repass over Rebecca Anne Lane. The dumpsters proposed for trash and snow removal, uh, will be part of the rent. Twenty-five, for the affordable units, rent is limited to thirty percent of the residence's income.
Oh, can I put you on hold there for a second?
Sure.
Apologies, um, we had an email we received, um, stating that they're no longer intending the dumpster. Um, it apparently was removed from the site plan, however, I don't recall that there was testimony about individual barrels. So what I would recommend is that, given the fact that the hearings closed, that they would request a change for that.
With some specificity.
So that they would have to request a change later for getting rid of the dumpsters, we leave this as is?
Yeah, I mean, I think the dumpster's been removed from the file, but, well, so they would have to delineate the change for you. They have to put it in writing, and then you would determine if it's insubstantial or not.
You'd have to show?
Right, but I think it's still an appropriate way, given that the hearings closed, to make that change.
So the more specificity that it had, the easier it would be to determine after the fact, right?
So we'll keep twenty-four as is for now. Uh, twenty-five, the affordable units, rent is limited to thirty percent of the residence's income.
Um, excuse me, sorry to interrupt again. Um, we also had an email indicating that rent may be allowed up to forty percent. I tried to verify that today, but there wasn't sufficient time to get a reply. So I guess, again, I would leave that.
As is, and they could?
Right.
By the change. Uh, twenty-six, uh, the survey of the rear westerly lot line for the premises demonstrated two fence encroachments into the premises from properties on Timothy Bourne Cartway. The applicant reported communicating with those property owners regarding the fences. Twenty-seven, the applicant plans to install a stockade fence at the rear westerly side of the premises. Uh, we don't have to have a size in there, do we?
I don't think so, I guess you could limit it to six feet.
Six feet, maybe just put six feet. Uh, twenty-eight, the applicant, uh, shifted the sighting of building number five as part of the site plan improvements. Twenty-nine, the premises located in the Bourne's Pond Coastal Pond Overlay District. The board discussed the major local and regional concerns about cumulative nitrogen impact on impaired water bodies from wastewater, and noted that the town is actively working to clean up sewage. The board sought information on the possibility of installing a denitrifying, a denitrification septic system to address the increased nitrogen levels associated with the increased density of the project and that related cost. Thirty, the applicant reported that the denitrifying, uh, septic systems were substantially more expensive than traditional septic systems. Thirty-one, the board requested a professionally-prepared estimate regarding the difference in cost between a standard septic system and a denitrifying septic system, and, and a denitrifying system, and a consultant to provide input as to whether the difference in cost would be uneconomic for the proposal. Thirty-two, the board expressed concerns about the single quote submitted by the developer for the installation of a denitrifying septic system, noting that the quote was from a firm with a relationship with the developer. Additionally, the quote had handwritten comments on it made by the development group that were reportedly based on information gained by phone from another party, and that quote contained language reporting that the denitrification system provided little to no benefit. Thirty-three, the developer stated the standard septic system would cost approximately forty-three thousand, and that a denitrification system would essentially double that amount costing an additional forty-six eight. Thirty-four, the financial consultant issued a report based on the information provided by the applicant and testified that the required, that the requirement to include additional costs associated with a denitrifying septic system would result in an infeasible economic condition for the applicant.
Um, there was a request to take out the word infeasible and just write uneconomic, which is, I'm fine with.
So it'll say now resulted in uneconomic?
Yeah.
The applicant has, uh, thirty-five, the applicant has requested a waiver from bylaw two forty nineteen A, the requirement for one single-family home per lot. Thirty-six, the applicant has requested a waiver by bylaw two forty sixty-eight B one, the setback requirement from the rear property line for patios for buildings three and four to be closer than ten feet.
Oh, excuse me there too, um, they contacted us today and, and I believe they stated that they did not need a waiver for that because it's just the patio that is within, uh, less than ten feet. So, we will not leave, need that particular waiver.
So we'll, uh, so strike thirty-six and then just renumber. Uh, thirty, uh, the new thirty-six will be the applicant has requested a waiver from article twenty-one bylaw two forty ninety-seven, requesting a tunnel five septic system for the premises within a coastal pond overlay district. Uh, thirty-eight, now thirty-seven, the applicant has requested a waiver from section one seventy-two point one of town code, which requires an owner to register annually with the Board of Health for occupancy limits. Uh, thirty-nine, the applicant has requested a waiver from bylaw two forty one twenty-nine C regarding the open space requirement for two or more multifamily units. I doubt it'll actually be the new thirty-eight. Forty, which is now thirty-nine, the applicant has requested a waiver from bylaw two forty one eleven E to clear cut the site. Forty-one, now forty, the applicant has requested a waiver from bylaw two forty one twenty-seven B to not require a twenty-foot side and rear setback for two family dwellings. Forty-two, now forty-one, the applicant reported that drainage was designed to meet standards as approved by the peer engineer. Forty-three, now forty-two, at the rear of the units, an eight-foot by twelve-foot patio is planned with a privacy fence between the units. Uh, forty-four, now forty-three, at the closest point, the patio will be six feet from the lot line, with the dwelling being fourteen feet from the lot line, which is in compliance with the ten-foot minimum setback of the bylaw. Forty-five, now forty-four, the lot coverage by structures is proposed to be fifteen point one percent, in compliance with the bylaw limit of twenty percent. Forty-six, now forty-five, the lot coverage by structures, parking, and paving is proposed to be thirty-nine point nine percent, in compliance with the bylaw limit of forty percent for the district. Forty-seven, the rental units are all proposed to be year-round rentals and will be monitored by Mass. Housing. Uh, forty-eight, now forty-seven, the, the projection for the rent for an affordable one-bedroom unit was one thousand two twenty-three, less a hundred and fifty-dollar utility cost. The rent for the affordable two-bedroom unit was one thousand four seventy-one, less the one seventy-six utility cost. So I just have a question on that one, 'cause I just haven't seen them written like this before, what does that mean? Does that mean they charge less on top of it, or?
Uh, so basically what they were telling you, now these, these rents are not obviously a guaranteed quote. These are what was disclosed by the applicant. And basically what they're saying is that, um, they're, they have, there's two different ways they can charge rent. They can either charge a, a full rent and decrease the utility, or they can decrease the utility for everybody if they so choose. But, um, if the applicant pays their own utility bills, they can reduce their rent slightly.
So does that mean that it's, it's twelve twenty-three? And if the applicant's paying their rent, they'll take another hundred and fifty off, if the applicant isn't?
If, if the applicant is paying the utilities themselves, it's my understanding that they can, um, decrease the rent slightly if the tenant is paying the full utility.
Okay, so that, so I, should that be in here somewhere? 'Cause the way this sounds is that the rents are twelve twenty-three, and then you're automatically deducting another hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, but again, that amount is just what the applicant provided to you. It's not a guarantee as to what they will charge.
So can you put less, um, the percentage of utility cost if the tenant is paying the utilities?
Or there'll be a, a decrease or an adjustment?
Yeah, 'cause if not, it just?
To leave it open-ended.
It doesn't read right, yeah. Uh, forty-nine, which is now forty-eight, the applicant has designed the development such that building one will be located toward the southerly area of the lot. Building five will be located at the northerly most point of the lot. Unit A is shown on the left side of the building, and unit B is shown on the right side of the building. Uh, fifty, now forty-nine, building one will contain two one-bedroom units. Building two, three, four, and five will contain all two-bedroom units. Fifty-one, now fifty, the applicant's original proposal, originally proposed that the units three A, four A, and five A will be designated as affordable. This has now been changed to units one A, three A, and five B. Unit one A will comprise a one-bedroom, and unit three A and five B will comprise two bedrooms. Uh, fifty-two dash, uh, now fifty-one, a draft decision was requested for July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. The consent from the applicant following an executed agreement for extension of statutory hearing, decision and filing deadline filed with the town clerk on June fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, shall we vote to, vote for findings as revised?
Uh, yeah, I just had a question. Let me just find it in a second. No, wait, was this the one that there was originally a comment by the? By the housing officer regarding? Handicap accessible? Any other version?
Um, there may have been a comment, I know that the board did discuss the issue that, while the applicant testified that there was accessibility within the unit, that the stairs?
Maybe it's in the, um, maybe it's in the?
Oh, it's on page three, is the referral of the, um, housing coordinator. It's, um, the second bullet under letters and referrals, emails by town department.
So can we add a finding in regarding that, that the housing production plan states the greatest need is for rental housing, with the most significant being units with one and two bedrooms?
I listed as visitable.
And they listed, and they listed that? There should be visibility for all units and accessibility for at least one unit? And that would give you all your numbers back. The only other thing, and it's just a typo thing, is that a lot of these just need to have periods.
Yeah, there are a few.
Accept the vote then?
Yep.
All right, so the, it's only a simple majority required for forty Bs, as I was correct it earlier in the night?
Yep, so this would be voting on the findings as revised.
Motion, motion by you?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Bob to accept the findings as revised, uh, second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, passes unanimously.
So now we'll do conditions, I guess we'll do each one.
All right.
So, uh, one, the construction shall be substantially as shown on the plans submitted to and reviewed by the board listed below, though subject to additional conditions separately delineated. Uh, the existing conditions plan, sheet one of six, dated September tenth, twenty-twenty, with a final revision date of February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Site plan layout, sheet two of six. Site plan grading and drainage, sheet three of six. Site plan septic and water, sheet four of six. Soil erosion and sediment control plan, sheet five of six. Septic and standard details, sheet six of six, prepared by R L B E L L C. Lot number two Rebecca Anne Lane, Falmouth. All plans are dated September tenth, twenty-twenty, with a final revision date of May twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, as drawn by Falmouth Engineering, Inc. Seventeen Academy Lane, Suite two hundred, Falmouth, Mass. Plans are stamped and signed by Michael J. Borzelli, P E, and Gary S. LeBrae, P L S. Pre-development drainage areas, sheet one of one. Post-development drainage areas, sheet one of one, dated March sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Prepared for R L B L L C. Lot number two Rebecca Anne Lane, Falmouth, is drawn by Falmouth Engineering, Inc. Seventeen Academy Lane, Suite two hundred, Falmouth, Mass. Plans are stamped and signed by Michael J. Borzelli, uh, P E. Uh, elevations, sheet one of seven. Elevation sheet three of seven. S I C elevations, four of seven. Elevation's sheet four of seven. Elevation sheet four of seven, oh, that's a typo, or is there a?
No, there were several pages that were numbered similarly, so, uh, they will require, and it does say later on in the conditions that they'll have to correct those page numbers.
Okay, could we, could we add in this, um, in this condition, they be corrected?
I did put that in below. So what I was trying to do there was to capture the plan references, and then later on, there is a condition that requires that that be corrected.
All right, so if we vote to that, it doesn't mean they can keep them that way, then?
Right.
Okay. So again, it says elevation sheet one of seven, elevation sheet three of seven, elevation sheet four of seven, elevation sheet four of seven, elevation sheet four of seven. All plans are dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen, as drawn by David McLean. Architectural Design Services, no address provided, prepared for McCrone, Cardinal Place, Falmouth, Mass. Plans are not stamped or signed. Now, later anywhere else will we need plans stamped or signed?
So they're corrected, plans will have to be?
So will we have the correction, it'll say they'll have to be stamped and signed?
We can, yep.
All right, so I guess we could vote this one?
All right.
So all in favor of the revised one?
All right. Yep, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously.
Two. The southerly narrow segment of the premises, which runs out to the east Falmouth Highway Route Twenty-eight, shall not be utilized for vehicular access or out of the development. There shall be no construction other than the driveway within the road layout.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Three units, One A, a one-bedroom unit, Three A, a two-bedroom unit, and Five B, a two-bedroom unit, shall remain affordable rental units in perpetuity to households earning no more than eighty percent of the median household income for Barnstable County, and shall remain eligible for inclusion on the town subsidized housing inventory per the requirements of the State Department of Housing and Community Development. D.H.C.D.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Four. There should be no bedrooms in the basement, and no space may be converted to add a bedroom to any unit. Noncompliance with this condition shall be considered a violation of the comprehensive permit.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Any future transfer of the premises shall require the prior written approval of D.H.C.D. and the zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six. The applicant shall maintain the perimeter fencing and install landscaping in good condition. For the first two years following issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, any plant materials substantially diseased or dead shall be removed and replaced. Mature trees, particularly those proximate to lot lines, should be maintained to the extent possible. Trees straddling the property line shall be assumed to be jointly owned and cannot be damaged without prior written approval of both parties. Trees to be protected and preserved shall be identified in the field and on a plan, a copy of which shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The applicant shall be responsible for maintenance of premises, including trash and snow removal.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The applicant shall comply with long-term pollution prevention plan, revision date April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Nine. Each condition of this decision shall run with the land and shall, in accordance with its terms, be applicable to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors and assigns.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Ten. The height of the building shall be twenty-one feet, four and a, one quarter inches.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Eleven. Where this comprehensive permit is granted specifically, under MGL Chapter Forty-B, Section Twenty dash twenty-three, allowing the override of local zoning density, there should be no as-of-right changes made to the subject property. Any changes requested shall be properly submitted to the zoning board of appeals as provided for under MGL Chapter Forty-B.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Twelve. The development shall be limited to a maximum of ten units within five duplex buildings with a total of eighteen bedrooms. Basement space may not be used as a bedroom space, nor may studies, offices, bonus rooms, or family rooms be converted to bedroom space. Any private, non-bedroom room shall have a minimum four-foot wide case opening.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thirteen. Parking or storage of any unregistered vehicle, boat, recreational vehicle, or trailers on the premises is strictly prohibited.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Fourteen. There shall be no accessory structures on the premises, including sheds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, fifteen. Um, the site inspector will be specifically responsible for inspections as directed by town engineering, ensuring adherence to the requirements in soil, soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Appendix A, including but not limited to the inspection and approval of the roadway subgrade, gravel base, binder course, and curbing, finish course, dry wells, and stormwater appurtenances. At no point shall the contractor construct on a roadway surface that was not inspected and approved by the site inspector. The site inspector will be specifically responsible to review the as-built plans for compliance with the approved plans.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Sixteen. All stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Seventeen. Maintenance and repair of dry wells, leaching, trenches, catch basins, manholes, and subservice leaching systems in addition to the fences on the property lines or between units in the driveway, as well as snow plowing, shall be the responsibility of the applicant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Dark sky compliant lighting shall be provided, and spotlights are prohibited. Any lighting installed to a side or rear building as required to meet code shall be dark sky compliant and not shed light off the subject lot.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Nineteen. This comprehensive permit shall not be transferred to a person or entity other than the applicant without prior approval by the zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Twenty. The applicant shall provide the zoning board with a copy of the audited cost certification of the development within one hundred and eighty days of completion of construction.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Twenty-one. Any changes from plans submitted and approved by the zoning board of appeals shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals for approval prior to implementation of said change. The zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are substantially as shown on the approved plans, referenced in condition number one above, and essentially minor in nature and can be approved administratively, or whether the applicant must submit the change to the Z.B.A. pursuant to seven sixty C.M.R. fifty-six point zero five eleven. Changes made prior to inapproval may be subject to a full hearing and are at risk that the Z.B.A. may deny the request, subjecting any unapproved construction be ordered undone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Twenty-two. This comprehensive permit shall be a master permit which will subsume all local permits and approve normally issued by the local boards. All local boards shall issue all necessary permits and approvals after reviewing such plans, only to ensure that they are consistent with the comprehensive permit in applicable state and federal laws.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Uh, twenty-three. This permit shall lapse three years from the date on which the decision is filed with the town clerk's office. It is a substantial use of the comprehensive permit has not sooner commenced except for good cause shown, as determined by the zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Bob, if whenever you get tired, or if you get tired, you want somebody else to read for a change? It'll certainly slow things down, but.
It, the, the rest of it's prior to site work, does anything after? If I was interested in adding something in, would I edit in, try to edit in now, or?
Um, I mean, I basically have them broken up based on, you know, general prior to site, prior to building permit. So is it something that's not already else in there?
Well, the only thing is that, you know, they're very specific on this HPP plan on that you have a unit that's actually accessible for handicap. And I understand that they did suggest that they could have a ramp available, but I looked at the ramps and stuff they submitted, and not E.V.A.-compliant. And the housing coordinator mentioned that in the HPP, it says that they would like at least one unit accessible. So I would like a condition in here. We have one handicap parking space as it is. That one of the units be accessible from grade, whether that be they had a ramp, or change a door, or whatever that is, but you could actually access the unit.
Okay, so you would like to add a condition that one of the units, one of the affordable units?
Sure.
Or do you just want one general?
I mean, just one unit, but if it's one of the affordable units, that's, um, I just think one of the units has to be handicapped, actually accessible. It doesn't make any sense to me that you would have a handicap space because the town requires it. And I think it's even more important in a rental project. And I know that they kind of came up with an idea that they could do something, but I don't think the burden should be.
It'll close that loop definitively.
Yeah. And, and we do, I mean, if we had to refer to anything, even in the finding, the, um, CHAPA has a definition on visitability, and they actually, um, have a definition that it be visitable, accessed by grade, whether it be a ramp, or, but you have to be able to access it from grade.
So would you refer to that if, as visitable, as opposed to accessible?
It's accessible.
All right, so they would likely need to.
Just add it in wherever you.
Some type of change to show how they'll accommodate that.
Yeah, whatever it is, I mean, they can figure out what it is. There was testimony at the time from the engineer that they actually could.
And you do want it to be one of the affordables, or you don't care?
I, you know, leave it up. I just think it's important to have one. I mean, I don't even know if it makes more sense if it'd be near the handicap parking space. I don't know which, I don't have the numbers, but.
That does make sense.
Whatever affordable unit is closer to that space, maybe.
Okay.
I mean, we could still leave in the finding that they said they could give a ramp to somebody, because maybe somebody else will want to visit, and they can get a ramp. But I think there should be at least one unit that's, it's new construction, so it's easy to do now.
Good points, Bob. All right, we got started on twenty-four?
Yeah, so if we add that in, so do we have to vote for that, or?
Um, sure.
So just put in a, so that we have a condition that says one of the units has to be, um, has to be accessible from grade.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Uh, prior to site work, uh, there should be no access to the premises by workers prior to the approved construction hours of seven AM or after seven PM, Monday through Saturday. No Sunday or holiday hours are allowed, absent an emergency. All construction vehicles shall remain strictly on the subject property and not obstruct sidewalks or park, uh, on abutting streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from idling on or near the premises outside of construction hours. During construction, effort shall be undertaken to minimize impact on abutters, including securing dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from a rain event, and ensuring the public roadways are kept clean in compliance with the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Eight, twenty-twenty, Appendix A, with the zoning board of appeals as this, as the permitting authority. The applicant shall consult with town engineering, uh, peer inspectional engineer regarding a preferred construction route to protect town roads and installation of a wash station and dust management during construction, and shall comply with general engineering requirements.
All right, all those in favor?
Uh, that needs to be identified on a plan somewhere.
Yeah.
That wash station has to be identified on a plan, on, on the working set of plans.
All right, so modified language there.
With the wash station, that it be depicted on the site plan.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Uh, the applicant shall show the gas and electric lines on the plans submitted for a building permit with a copy of town engineering and zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The applicant shall sign the illicit discharge form for stormwater management. Shall install silt sacks to catch basins, including at the southwest corner and behinds Building One, Two, and Three. Downstream stormwater structures shall be protected during construction. Additional protection of existing stormwater structures shall be added if deemed necessary by the site inspector. Modification, repair, maintenance, or replacement of installed protection measures shall be made if deemed necessary by the site inspector.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The applicant shall provide to the police, building department, and Z.B.A. the name and phone number and email address of a project contact individual for the duration of the construction process to ensure that any questions or concerns, including those of abutters and residents, are timely managed. Do, do we have to tell, um, what is prior to site work, so I guess we're all set?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Uh, the applicant shall meet with the Falmouth Police Department to determine when or if police details would be required. All police details required by the Falmouth Police Department, or per the applicant's own choice, shall be paid for by the applicant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
At the applicant's expense, a site inspector will be designated by the town for this project to act in the stead of town engineering from the firms that have been pre-vetted by the town due to the town's lack of capacity to conduct oversight inspections. The site inspector will perform or oversee inspections, testing, material approval, reports, or other construction-related services required, including compliance with the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions, Appendix A, and report directly to the town's engineering department. The applicant shall establish a fifty-three G account through the zoning board of appeals for the site inspector.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Prior to starting work under the comprehensive permit, the applicant and general contractor shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, town engineer, water superintendent, department of public works representative, fire inspector, site inspector, zoning administrator, and board of health to review the conditions to ensure compliance with the decision and town requirements.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Uh, thirty-one. Construction shall be in accordance with all requirements of town engineering, including the town's twenty-twenty soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions, Appendix A. The applicant shall request inspections in writing at least twenty-four hours in advance. Reinspection fees shall be per three oh five dash five to the town and as negotiated with the site inspector contract. No construction shall commence until inspection for the below items have been approved. A, the required erosion and sediment controls are installed and approved. B, a stabilized construction entrance and wash station is installed and approved. C, stormwater and infiltration areas are protected and the protection means are approved. And D, the limit of work is demarcated in the field and approved. E, any trees on or proximate to the lot line shall be preserved to the extent possible. Trees on the lot line are considered jointly owned and cannot be removed, absent approval by both property owners. Any such trees to be saved shall be marked and with a sufficient perimeter, usually drip line, to ensure protection of the roots. Um, I just have a quick question to the administrator. So we had a situation on one project where they never, they never called DigSafe. I know we haven't had that before. Where is that covered underneath this? Because in that case, there was a problem that happened, and then the town couldn't go in, because.
I don't think you could get a building permit without DigSafe, but that would be through building, and I'm sure all the, you know, peer inspectional engineer will be looking at that as.
Bob, the onus becomes, or the, it, the, the, the onus is on the, the excavation company, whoever does, digs it up. That's part of.
No, I know, it's just, it's just.
Individually, if that happens.
It's just that they had a case, and when it happened, the town couldn't go in to fix it because no one had called DigSafe, so the town couldn't even.
DigSafe doesn't do private property, anyway. You have to have an outside contractor to come in and do.
No, I know, they just didn't, they did the excavation, even including the town street, without calling DigSafe, and the town just couldn't do anything. It's not, it's not this developer, but.
All right.
Uh, ba, 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 okay, uh.
Pass over that one?
Yep, I'll pass over that one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Uh, the driveway shall remain private?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The town is specifically not waiving fees associated with construction, including but not limited to the water line, water tapping, sleeve, and valve, water meters, and services, and engineering, and building department fees. Plans shall be submitted to the Department of Public Works, water superintendent. The private driveway shall not be considered for acceptance by the town. As such, the driveway shall be privately owned, and maintenance shall be the responsibility of the applicant in perpetuity. Any required utility easement shall be in a form and manner as prescribed by the town.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Plan shall show location of septic components and water service. Plan shall state all standards, policies, construction practices, or rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Prior to building permit, applicant shall comply with the board of health requirements for a Title V septic system?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Prior to installation of any stormwater leaching facilities, the site inspector shall observe the bottom of excavation, and the applicant's engineer, engineer shall verify the elevation is a minimum of two feet above estimated seasonal high groundwater.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The water superintendent is required to sign off on the proposal, prior.
There's a, excuse me, correction there. So instead of the word proposal, it should be application, because this is for the building permit.
So the water superintendent is required to sign off on the application prior to the issuance of any building permit?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The applicant shall become a limited dividend organization prior to commencement of any activities approved by the comprehensive permit as required by seven sixty C.M.R. fifty-six point zero four. The applicant must remain in compliance as a limited dividend organization to restrict profits.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
The applicant shall purchase the subject parcel and provide confirmation of ownership to the zoning board of appeals prior to the issuance of a building permit.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Final addressing and unit designation shall be as provided by town engineering.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Prior to the issuance of a building permit for a building or unit, the applicant is required to submit to mass housing a request for final approval of the project in accordance with the comprehensive permit rules, seven sixty C.M.R. fifty-six point zero four, and the guidelines, including Part Three concerning affirmative fair housing, marketing, and resident selection. A copy of the final approval letter shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
This permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk, that twenty days has elapsed after the decision had been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed, or that an appeal has been filed within such time as recorded in Barnstable Registry of Deeds. Any person exercising rights under duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk that a court may reverse the permit, and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Separate applications for water service shall be made for each unit with appropriate plans, including a meter request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously.
Prior to the issuance of any building permit, the applicant shall, A, prepare the final draft of a monitoring agreement and a property management agreement, and a property management agreement, and submit said draft to the board for approval as to form by town council; and B, submit to the board of appeals evidence of final approval from the subsidizing agency as required by the project eligibility letter in MGL 40B regulations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The applicant shall update the certified plot plan to show full footprint dimensions, removal of the two fence encroachments, and addresses as assigned by engineering with a copy of the updated plan submitted to the zoning board of appeals for review and approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Final architectural plan should be submitted with correct sheet numbers, designations, plus dimensions for bulkhead with a copy of the updated plan submitted to the zoning board of appeals for review and approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Prior to occupancy, the building number shall be posted by the applicant in accordance with subsection 99-1, affixing of legible numbers required as formally assigned by town engineering with the building permit application and approved by the fire prevention inspector prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The applicant shall maintain a handicap access ramp for installation upon request by prospective or current tenant. One parking space shall be designated for handicap parking only.
There'll just be a number change there. It says 45.1.
Right, I...
And then she could probably add in the ramp.
I guess the question I have for you though is if you want them to have one of the units be accessible, do you still want to require the ramp?
Yeah, because they're all, they're all supposed to be visitable.
Yeah, okay, yeah. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
One affordable unit must be leased per three market rate units. A certificate of occupancy for the final unit may not be issued until all affordable units have been completed and granted a certificate of occupancy. All units shall have the same general exterior appearance and construction quality and be in conformance with the approved plans.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A certified as-built plan shall be provided to the building department, copy to the ZBA for review for conformance to the approved plans prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The as-built plan shall be an overlay on the site plan layout plan with the addition of the proposed stormwater management system structures and pipes added to serve as the approved base plan, plus water lines and septic components. Any deviations from the approved plan should be clearly shown in red line over the base plan, which should be faded back for clarity. The as-built should be certified by both a licensed surveyor and a registered engineer that work was performed in conformance with the approved plans and all permits.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Final lottery agent, lottery plan, and marketing plan should be submitted to the zoning board of appeals prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
As-built drawings should be submitted to the water superintendent and include ties for valves, hydrants, and fittings on the water main. A tie card for each house shall be provided with appropriate distances and locations identified.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until all required site work, including landscaping, drainage, or improvements are completed. The developer may request that the ZBA consider a bond for the value of incomplete work to ensure that the work is complete in accordance with plans.
I'd like to add testing to that.
Is that the water testing?
Yeah.
That's what I was asking, but yes.
That's that one, okay.
Oh, so you want the...
That flow test.
Water pressure tested.
Prior to the...
Prior to the certificate of...
Prior to CEO.
Yep.
All right, so with that revision, all those in favor?
Aye.
To the extent permitted by law, and B, the subsidizing agency Mass Housing, preference for the rental of 70% of the affordable units in the initial lottery shall be given to persons or families who are Falmouth residents, or the parent or child of current Falmouth residents, or employees of the town of Falmouth, or those employed within the town of Falmouth. The local preference shall be implemented by a lottery agent approved by the zoning board of appeals prior to conducting the lottery. The lottery agent shall submit a final lottery plan to the zoning board of appeals for its approval. All costs associated with the lottery shall be...
Lottery?
Lottery. All costs associated with the lottery shall be exclusively borne by the applicant.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall, A, submit a final executed copy of the property management agreement to include installation, operation, and maintenance of common facilities; and B, submit a final executed copy of the monitoring services agreement. Report of the monitoring agent shall be provided after initial rental, then annually to the zoning board of appeals.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And as you're approaching the waivers, you're going to remove that...
You put that at the end?
Uh, requiring the setback for the rear property.
Okay. So on the, any waiver not requested, should that go at the end or at the beginning, or does it matter?
Um, it doesn't matter.
All right, so any waiver not requested or voted by the zoning board of appeals is deemed denied.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A waiver from Bylaw 240-19A, the requirement for one single family home per lot.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A waiver from...
So 55 is the one we're getting rid of.
Okay, so let's just delete it.
So 56 is the new 55.
Yep. So a waiver from Article 21, Bylaw 240-97, requesting a Title V septic system for the premises within a coastal pond overlay district.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fifty-seven, a waiver from 172.1 of Town Co., which requires an owner to register annually with the board of health for occupancy limits. On this one, I've got a question. Why would you ask for a waiver of that? I mean, any rental in town has to register for occupancy? I don't even think, it's just registering, it's not...
Right, I guess the question is...
I don't think there's a cost to that.
Is that annually?
Yeah.
I don't recall hearing any testimony as to why busting that waiver.
I mean, I guess the question is, would that be that the property owner would...
Property owner goes down, and he basically just goes down and says, he names the units and just states how many people are occupying, so that they know that everything is within... But if you have a complaint and...
Oh, so that the septic matches that type of thing?
Yeah, let's say, you know, you're allowed to have four people, and he says it's four and registers, and then there's a complaint by a neighbor that says there's eight people in there, then the town has something to go on because they've already registered the...
Well, that's an interesting point. Well, it's up to you. If you think that it's not reasonable, you can...
So I personally, I've just dealt with rentals, I would personally, um...
So you could deny?
Vote no on that one.
I mean, it's a requirement of the board of health. You're dealing with health and safety factors.
Yeah, it's not a big cost or anything, so...
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Oh.
Opposed?
No.
Doesn't pass.
So that's denied.
So 58, a waiver from Bylaw 240-129C regarding the open space requirement for two or more multifamily units.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A waiver from Bylaw 240-111E to clear cut the site.
All those in favor?
What?
Oops, sorry, Scott.
There was, there was one that deemed all, all shared trees on the property line. Does that...
Right, so here's the circumstances, that they're asking to clear cut the site. They essentially have the right to do that, with the exception of a tree that's on the property line or sufficiently proximate to it, that their removal of trees could damage, so if...
So could we modify that to include that?
I think you just clean the language up to say...
They have a waiver to clear cut the site except for what you just mentioned?
Just to clarify that.
Yeah, exactly.
That way it can't be used as a...
Trees on the property line.
Or trees.
That would be damaged.
All right, so voting that as revised. All those in favor?
Aye.
A waiver from Bylaw 240-127B to not require a 20-foot side and re yard setback for two family dwellings.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So before we vote, is there anything else that anyone...
Think we're all said? Anything on this side?
Mm-mm.
All right. Would anyone like to make...
So I'll make the motion to approve as revised.
I'll second.
Motion made by Bob and second by James.
Which is the findings and conditions for Case 55-20, granting comprehensive permit to RLBE LLC for five duplex buildings, 10 total units, of which three will remain affordable in perpetuity. At Lot 2, Rebecca Anne Lane, East Shamet, Mass., oh, before we, before we vote this, just one question. So I know they said they're going to be year-round units. Can we condition them that they're year-round rental units?
I believe we did. I think we required a 12-month minimum.
I just didn't see it in the conditions. Since we're living in the era of Airbnb.
I remember us talking about that, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just didn't know if it was in the conditions section.
I'm not tonight.
Chairman, on a point of order, as people are going through the decision, our business will need to be extended. I'll make a motion to extend for 30 minutes.
I'll second Mr. Morse's motion.
Motion to extend tonight's business for another 30 minutes, made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for catching that.
So we could just add it in, and if it's a duplicate, that you can just pull out the duplicate. The condition that the units be for year-round tenancy.
Yeah, I will make sure that that was referenced.
We could vote that.
All right, so...
So a condition that the...
That has to be voted separately.
Yeah.
So what is it, Bob?
So we're going to add a condition that the, that all the units be for year-round tenancy only.
All right, so adding that condition.
I'll second Mr....
I'm sorry, do we, I mean, in addition to year-round, should the tenancies be year-to-year as well, or just year-round?
Yeah, I think you can just make a year-round.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can't require them to keep tenancy.
No, I understand, okay, I understand.
So adding that condition made by Bob, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so following a motion made by Robert Dugan and second by James Morse, to approve the findings and conditions for Case 55-20, granting comprehensive permit to RLBE LLC for five duplex buildings, of which three will remain affordable in perpetuity, at Lot 2, Rebecca Anne Lane, East Shamet, Massachusetts, Accessors Map 32010602, the premises as revised this evening.
All right, so the motion was made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, everyone. After that, all right. Up next, Board Member Status, Falmouth Home Rule Charter, C7-2G, Determination of Membership Status for both Mary Berry and Ed Van Kieren. I'm just going to keep the conversation on this brief. I do want to respect both of their privacies. But it's been a while since this issue last came up on the board, so I just want to read into the record just exactly what C72G is, since it was voted upon at town meeting this spring, and there's new language involved. So it says that the unexcused absence without good cause of a member from one half of the total meetings during any 12-month period or from four or more consecutive meetings of any such governmental body shall serve to vacate the office. Vacancies shall be determined by the chairperson and confirmed by a majority vote of the governmental body when such vacancy has been so determined. It shall be filled in accordance with the general laws when applicable, or the process to fill the vacancy shall begin within 30 days. So concerning Mary, she has missed four meetings in a row. Noreen, anything to add?
No.
No, okay.
Thank her for her service to the board.
No, absolutely. So as Chair, I do want to extend my thanks to her for her dedicated service to the board. She's put in a lot of time, a lot of effort as an associate member. She's been appointed to a voting member on many occasions over the past two, two and a half years, and she's been assigned by me personally to a number of subcommittees. She's contributed enormously to this board.
Has there been any dialogue one way or the other?
And that was going to be my question is...
With regards to the status? It's either a yes or a no, I mean.
Do we have to make a decision on this tonight, Mr. Chairman?
So I guess what I would bring up to you is you have an issue with board members and the number of people. Should any of you get a flat tire or anything else, you could subject hearings to problems, so...
And I don't disagree, Noreen, my...
Unfortunately, critical to have a full board to the, and, you know, it's going to require notice by the select board and...
We have a hearing over the next week, correct? My only concern is would be just to have a formal request if there's cause or intent, or what the intentions are. If there's no response, there's no response.
Right, well, we did reach out.
Okay.
We did make offers, and we've just not been successful.
All right, I just want to make sure that was part of the record.
All right, so according to this, we are acknowledging that she has missed four meetings in a row, and we would need a vote of the majority of members recognizing that and then transmitting that, I believe, to town manager's office, Mary? All right, would anyone like to make that motion? All right, so I'll make the motion to do such. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Thank you, James. So it does, does pass with the majority of members. All right, up next, same thing, C7-2G, determination of membership status of Ed Van Kieren. Ed has also missed four meetings in a row. Noreen, do we have any updates as to Ed's status?
Uh, no, he, I was in touch with him today. He's got some ongoing medical condition and is not sure when he'll be back to join you, but he is looking forward to that.
So, Noreen, there is a willingness to...
Yes.
Continue to participate.
In fact, he attended the open meeting training that was on last Thursday night.
So this should be considered a medical leave?
Right. So, and he has been in communication with me, and he expressed his willingness to stay onto the board, so I'm certainly willing to find good cause as far as that goes, and...
And he was willing to leave the hospital, to the hospital and come to a meeting one night, so... I mean, that, if that doesn't express a willingness to be here...
Sure does.
I think he has checked himself out early sometimes.
I'd make the motion to extend Mr. Van Kieren, however you want to phrase it, because of medical condition, without going into it anymore.
Finding good cause and extending his leave of absence.
Yes, sir, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Scott, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right, board updates. Is there anything? None?
The recertification meeting was changed again.
Oh, that's right, I did get that email.
The Bylaw recertification.
Get pushed off again.
There is a, what's it called? The overlay district for the Davis Straits reset will be before town meeting prospectively in November.
Yeah, there's been some movement on that, right?
The text has been, I believe, posted, and they would be interested if you have any feedback.
So maybe we can get a copy of the updated text, because this overlay district is basically going to pull any authority away from zoning, and it's going to make it by right.
You see?
And there's a lot of expansive changes.
I think one thing that it will point out...
Both in language and the size, right?
Yeah, I mean, originally, you know, as of the last certification meeting, I talked to a planning board member, and there wasn't a restriction on affordable, but from what I've seen now, they're alluding that there is one, so...
So I kind of was getting the general impression that they were looking to require a minimum of 25, or requiring 25% affordable housing. So it's very similar to a comprehensive permit, but without any of the zoning board's actions.
So what we see as a 40B, it looks like they're proposing up to 20 units per acre by right, which means as in the butter, there would be no...
No notification, no public hearing.
I just know what we deal with, with even tonight with a small...
Well, it would be, it would be site approval, but the problem is, is that it's not appealable.
It's not appealable.
You have to wait until you have the building permit.
And that's, that's lip application, that's anything?
Well, not, no, so it's under 40, so 40B, it's a separate, mass general law. Yeah, so it essentially makes very similar things compared to 40B, but it makes it by right. So there's no, no special permit, no public hearing process except for site plan review.
And it may also be an understanding that's going around that you don't need parking because these people that are going to be renting affordable units do not have vehicles.
How do you do that in a remote area?
I think the hope is that people will live and work in an area that... I think the hope is that people will live and work in an area that they can perhaps-
I, I understand the ideal, I understand the ideal behind it, it's just that, and the other thing, and again, I haven't seen the update, but when we went to the hearings with Ed, they showed this beautiful marketing presentation of building styles and designs. Do you like this? Do you like that?
Yep.
As far as I know, there is no architectural view in the town, and they can give a suggested list of what something should look like, but if they're not making a requirement, you get what you get, and once it's there, it's up. I, I don't like the fact that where we deal with zoning, and I've just never understood this with the planning board in general, because I really don't see the giant conflict between the boards. I never have. We are never asked for comments or referrals, and the last time we gave one, it was basically just thrown in the trash. It said we shouldn't get involved. So, and that was on the solar. It was just, it was just dismissed. Like, we had specific reasons, they didn't answer any of the questions, and I don't know why this process has gone on so long, and not even the town planner has come to a meeting, or there's been a joint meeting, to say this is what we are intending for changes for the center of town. I mean, it's going to be all business redevelopment, all, you know, B one, B two, the plaza. It's a massive change for a town. And as a town meeting member, I just went through a town meeting where something passed with no details. They didn't even ask for details, and you just don't know what you're going to get, and I'm just afraid. And I own property in the middle of town that would get rezoned, so I could take advantage of it. I am really afraid what it's going to change the look of this town if this is not presented properly, and it's just a town meeting vote. And I think we should have been given all this information in advance. I, I don't know what, what-
They are holding public hearings now.
I, I understand, but you're a board in the town. We send referrals out to every single board, and we look at the referrals that come back, and we take that into consideration. Why wouldn't you, on a rezoning, send the same thing? Engineering, health, conservation,
Bob, you know why.
Yeah, I see. I know why, because people are going to say there's issues with it, but it, it should be, it just should be done. It just doesn't make sense, it just, it makes no sense to me whatsoever.
I think they're trying to do some streamlining. I think they realize what the extent of amount of time it is for fortyBs to get through zoning.
Listen, I know, but there, the, the other thing behind is they're saying if they do this, no one will do a forty-B in town. They'll only put it in these areas, and that just is not, as an agent, I can tell you that it's just not going to happen. They're going to put fortyBs wherever they can get them on a site. It doesn't have to be downtown. I just, it's, it's troubling that these huge changes. Now, I was on the apartment committee. Half of that apartment committee choice was they didn't want the zoning board to hear accessory apartments. And the zoning board used to keep a list of the accessory apartments, and each year they'd call the board and just say, this is our apartment, and it's registered. They didn't even want us to do that. They wanted to do it to the building department, and the building commissioner honestly got up in the meeting and said, I am not going to do it. I'm not going to do the registration, and I'm not going to pay attention. If you go to the building department right now and ask how many of the accessory apartments are registered?
So at that point, was he the authority on that?
The planning board. They just make the change. So, you know, some of this stuff might be good. They may have some really good points in there. The problem is, if you don't see it, and then the answer is come to a public hearing.
I would love to see, if they were going to do that, I'd love to see an increase in the minimum amount of affordable to market rate.
Well, I think that they don't want to do that.
If that would be a good give.
They don't want-
So on the accessory apartment bylaw, this was, this is a perfect comparison. The accessory apartment bylaw we used to have said that you could have the apartments if they were for affordable rents, and they pulled it from the bylaw.
I'm just saying.
So they, so literally, the apartments that had already been approved over the years, that were renting to affordable, all wrote into the board and said, remove my deed restriction. I'm not going to do it anymore. I'm going to rent where I want.
I, I've always had the contention, as long as that percentage stays the same.
It's not going to-
You could build every piece of property in this town and never catch that number and meet your goal. I mean, no, you know, everybody doesn't want to say that out loud, but if the percentages stay the same, this is going to go on and on and on and on until we're built all the way out.
Affordable restrictions with large percentages.
Well.
Because every time we do one of these projects, they have twenty-five percent, and the other ones, we go backwards because all the market rate unit occupants mean now we need more affordable units in town.
Well, it's either that or the town has to just get very proactive, like Lincoln and some of the other towns.
It says, this is what we want to do.
We're going to build a one-hundred percent affordable project.
And look at it a different way.
Get above the number, which point you can then have three acres zoning.
The other thing on the, from what I understood before, and it might have changed, which didn't make sense to me, is that to do a project like this, let's take the plaza just for an example, you would first of all have to empty of all tenants. You would then have to redevelop the entire property into the specs of the town, and then go for a new tenant or a new change. So as far as I know, they haven't, I mean, I'm a member of the chamber. They haven't talked to any of the business owners to say, can you afford, you know, we did, we did the, um, the urgent care, the Papaginos building, all those are new buildings. If they're in the district, they would have to agree basically to get rid of all their tenants, tear it down to the ground, and rebuild.
That's a lot of lost time and lost revenue.
So the town is going to have to give massive credits, tax credits, to make up some of that businesses. But if you take the plaza, for example, what do you do with, like, a cap is a Christmas tree shop at Staples? If they're just not even there for a year or two, and you need them in town, you use the businesses. So I just, we need to get more details on it, and we need to review it.
Sounds good. We covered a lot of ground tonight, but maybe if we mark it up as an agenda item, we can, we can review the proposal and talk about it some more, see if we want to take an official board position on it and communicate with the planning board.
I mean, as always, Noreen's asked for us to do a Saturday or something. That'd be a good conversation for something like that.
Sure. You know, maybe Tom Barker could even come in and give us a presentation of what the current-
Or at least be invited, so.
Be invited, maybe he'd give a presentation of what the current situation is.
All right. Any other board updates? For discussion? I know we just had one, but anything else?
So just a little item, and it's not comparing what's tonight, but when we had some of these other projects with swimming pools, I went through the Mass Building Code, and I would like to find out from whoever is going to be the current building commissioner. So on all these pools, because I'm sure we're going to see more, it said somewhere in the code that there is a certain amount of patio around the pool that is required, that it has to be considered part of the structure. So maybe we could just find out from the current building-
Here'll be the defining, uh, feature on that question, so when he gets here, or we have time to do it in the last.
Just see what it is, if, so we know, or what's in it.
Because I think on the last pool that came up, the determination was that patio area would fall under lock coverage.
And I, and I was completely agreement until I started looking at the codes on pools, and it said that, it actually broke down what the structure is, which is weird, but.
All right, so if we have further clarification on that. Anything else? New agenda items?
Sleep.
Sleep? Yep. Our next meeting is August fifth, here at Town Hall. Meeting adjourned.